Call the regular meeting of the Pennington County Commission order. Copies of the agenda in the back of the room. Speaker request forms are also back there, so if you have intent or want to speak on a particular item that's on the agenda, I just get to fill out the speaker request forms. Turn it in to Holly Hennies, who sits on your right, just at the base of the dais. We'll start with a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Roskin.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Roskin. Review and approve agenda. So move second. Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda through request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 20th, 2022. Number six is authorization to cancel the list of outstanding checks over one year old and remit funds totaling $8,532.34 to the Office of the State Treasurer as submitted by our auditor. Number seven is to approve the renewal of the retail on-off sale Mont beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Mexico Typical LLC and to release the license upon payment of appropriate property taxes. Number eight is approval of the amendment to the joint powers agreement between the South Dakota Department of the Military and Pennington County for the installation of an improved cooling system and the backup 911 dispatch room. Number nine is to approve the operating fund transfer from the general fund to the E911 fund in the amount of $351,170 for the 2022 budgeted operating transfer. Number 10 is to approve the resolution for firefighter appreciation day. Number 11 is to declare six sanders as surplus for the purpose of disposal, including one 2002 Monroe Sander, asset number 005406, not submitted by the highway department. And finally, number 12 is to approve the revised 2021 to 2026 memorandum of understanding with the city of Rapid City for the exchange of snow removal routes.
Any members of the public that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion? Mr. Ellsworth is requesting number five, requesting the minutes of the regular meeting be polled. Any others from the public? Back to the commission. Any items that the commission would like to have removed from consent calendar? Ain't none, I take a motion to approve six through 12.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
To approve six through 12.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Ellsworth.
I leave my comments this morning to two items. The extraordinary controversial and non-routine concealment of an order ordering you folks to preserve all the records on the elections. The order was issued September 1st. It came out UJS, you have it all, on the 6th. It provided that the state, the county auditor in the state shall now and hereafter preserve the machine logs from the automatic tabulation machines in the county on and after November 3rd, 2020, and after and through the inclusion of any potential appeal. As far as I'm concerned, I just can't believe that you didn't bring that to the public's eye, that you have been ordered by a judge in the state to preserve all these records. The second thing that I bring to your attention is, I tried to bring it the last time, it was the hiring of Michael Butler in the, that I had presented some information through, that you've tried to rehire him for two, three months now, and apparently succeeded on the 6th of September. This is all included in the minutes that I'm talking about. This man is a domestic terrorist. I think it's extraordinary and controversial that you're hiring him and concealing that in your records. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LaCroy.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, September 20th, 2022.
Got a motion, is there a second?
I'll stick with that.
I've got a motion and a second. Quite frankly, I don't even know how to respond to those accusations. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 13. Matthew Monfor, would you come forward, please? So, Mr. Monfor has requested an item titled Elections and Machines in Pennington County, but he's also requested a special meeting to address the Pennington County elections. And I'm suggesting that we have, at this commission, move forward with establishing a time and a date for a special meeting for this particular issue. And I believe Mr. Monfor agrees with that.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve a special meeting so that we can focus on this and not have to do it in front of the general public and take up time for a regular scheduled meeting.
I would second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Public comment on it. Mr. Monfor, would you like to?
I can just give like a three-minute overview for the public record if you won't mind that, or otherwise we can just carry on if you guys are moving forward with the special meeting.
What we'll do is at the end of this meeting, we'll work on our calendars to establish the date and time for the special meeting.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Could I just give a general overview for the public?
Very quickly, please.
Okay, no disrespect and no rabbit trails. My name is Matthew Monfor. I'm 28 years old. I've lived 24 years of my life in the Black Hills. I'm an ordained Baptist preacher, and I was born in Rapid City, South Dakota. Rapid City is the hub of the Black Hills. And to have a dishonest vote count in Pennington County is to disenfranchise smaller counties in South Dakota, particularly the one I'm from, which is Fall River County, South Dakota. I just want to, for the public record, note that Rick Wyble had submitted an affidavit of the certification of ESNS machines, that they are non-certifiable according to South Dakota codified law if they are not able to produce cast vote records, which would help us show that there has been election fraud in Pennington County. And then I also provided you with a packet of information regarding the election, as well as affidavits, a couple of examples. There are affidavits for Pennington County in regards to phantom voting, that they were registered as voting and they did not. So I just wanted to state that, and I look forward to the special meeting. I think that many people here would agree that these elections are purchased with blood, and the county does, according to South Dakota codified law, have the right to certify an election or to not certify an election. And so I would strongly urge us to take this seriously, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments by the commission?
Mr. Chairman, just one quick question. I don't know what we're thinking about, and I know we're going to talk about it a little bit later, but I'm wondering, why is to consider more in the evening to get more participation, or just are we going to look at it as a regular timeframe? Just something to consider and think about, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion to schedule a special meeting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Item number 14. Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Justin Yurig. I'm here today representing my family ranch, Clapper Ranch LLP. Dean Clapperidge is my father-in-law. You see his name on the list as well. With me today also is Tyler Richter, who owns R&amp;R Trenching. Commissioners, what we are in the process of doing is drilling a 3,035-foot, 100-foot deep well on our ranch. We are having hardships due to drought, drying up dams, and we are struggling to get watered all of our livestock. So at this point, we're trying to trench water lines and drill a well so that we can get water on both sides of our ranch. Our ranch is split by baseline road, and so we went to the county to request a permit to be able to bore under the road, knowing that this has happened in the past, I think 2019 timeframe generally, is what Joe said, that there was a state's attorney that, I'm not trying to take this out of context or misinterpret, but basically some interpretation into what is allowed as far as in the public right-of-ways. To my understanding, private utilities are not. Obviously, this is very frustrating for us to be able to get water to our livestock because we're not going to drill two, 3,000-foot wells if they're only 3,000 foot, they could go deeper on either side of the county road due to the cost, but knowing that this has happened in the past and now all of a sudden we cannot do it. I have concerns for us as a family, as well as concerns for anybody else. I'm also an ag real estate appraiser, and I see water lines being one of the most critical things to a family ranch or any agriculture entity. And so I'm here in front of the commission today because the county, at this point, is not able to approve this permit based on how the state's attorney is saying it is written. I'm requesting the commissioners go ahead and approve this board permit, and we're not requesting to do this in a manner which is substandard. The gentleman that's going to be in charge of hiring the bore company to do it, they're going to sleeve the water line when it goes under the road, so it'll be sleeved. So if there ever is issues, the water would end up ultimately coming back onto our property and not onto the roadbed or damaging the roadbed to any extent. To my understanding, he said it'll be 10 foot under the roadbed, so it will be deep enough to not impede the roadbed and the origination point, and also the final destination of point will be on private property and not in the right-of-way. Is there any questions? I know that's kind of a quick overview.
So Justin, you've not dug the well yet?
We have not dug the well yet. We started this process probably about a year ago, and we got on the well drillers list, and deep wells are in deep demand or in high demand right now. And so the timeframe when the well driller's going to be there is probably January. So we do have the horse a little bit behind the cart in this situation where we're trying to get the water lines in before the ground freezes. The well driller is still telling us it's going to be January. Timeframe-wise, that's not great, but you know, we need to push ahead, and we need to try to get these water lines in so that when the well is there, that we can hopefully just get hooked up. Going that deep, it's not that uncommon. We have two neighbors next to us. One of the wells was drilled probably in 2018 or 2019 on his property. He went, I think, roughly 3,300 foot deep. The well that we now get some water from, from a different neighbor, is 2,800 feet deep. And you may be asking yourselves, why can we not keep using those wells? And it's just due to capacity. We've been gimping by at best for the last three and a half, four years, trying to get by, and on a routine basis, we'll wake up and we'll have water in the morning. Ironically enough, whether or not it was intended or not, this morning we didn't have water. So it's an ongoing issue. It's frustrating. You wake up, you have a lot of livestock. Sometimes it's during the middle of a very hot, dry day, and sometimes it's Christmas Eve morning. So it's frustrating, and I know this won't be a cure-all, but it will hopefully pull a little demand off the neighbors and ultimately be more reliable on ourselves. We do have a shallow well on the property, and at best that'll supply enough water for about 50 cows, but then ultimately the houses don't have water either. So shallow wells are not an option because there's not enough surface water out there or shallow where aquifers at that point. Rural water systems are not an option at this point out there. If they expanded, we'd greatly tie onto one. Alwanka Rural Water is nearby, but Alwanka Rural Water does not have the pressure or volume to be able to pump to us at this point, and West River Lyman Jones would be the other rural water system that might be an option, but they will not come west of the Cheyenne. That's due to, to my understanding, laws that will not allow them to. So we've exhausted other options. This is kind of where we're at. This is what is the norm for that area now. There's not been a lot of development that far out on baseline historically due to the fact that there's not good reliable water. Prior to us moving down there, there was about one other guy that lived down there, too, and it's been, and that's what he said, there just was not good reliable water. And so when they couldn't get water, there's guys that didn't even graze down there. So this is, this is trying to better improve those lands, better improve those ranches, and allow water for domestic purposes as well on those agriculture ranches.
Mr. Chair, I was just, I've talked to Justin about this. I'm also familiar with that area because I live north of him a few miles, and I can concur with everything he's talking about as far as the water situation. I also know my water situation, so yeah, if you're going to get good water, you got to go deep with that. So I just wanted to chime in on that and let you know I've also had several conversations with Justin or Mr. Richter concerning this particular project, as well as Joe Miller and Megan.
Commissioner Adgar.
I did look into this, and I called Megan. I've called Justin, and I've called a couple of people that live out by New Underwood just to verify what Justin is saying on baseline road in that area. That's why he had to dig that well 3,000 feet, for that reason, because of water, and that sleeve's going to make a huge difference on the other side of the road because of the shallow well on the other side that only can, basically 50 cows can drink out of. Can you tell me how much head of cattle you have, Justin?
We have roughly 400 cows that we calve each year, and in a given time, we'll have probably 200 calves on place at a time, drinking anywhere from 20 to 40 gallons a day, depending on the time of year and what they're getting for a feed.
So Justin, why do you have to have, you have your homestead with the well, why do you have to sleeve underneath the road at this time?
And that was basically, Mr. Richter said that that's kind of the norm, that's the most appropriate way to do it, to my understanding. I can't speak to exact specifics on that, but the sleeve will allow the water line to be run through that sleeve. That sleeve, basically, it's two layers. There'll be a larger sleeve that goes through the road, and then our water line will ultimately go through that sleeve. That sleeve's connected so that water cannot seep out of it. It's threaded together. The dimensions, the thickness of the pipe, Tyler can speak to that a little bit more, but then if there ever is issues, we can go in and pull that water line out without any impact to the roadbed and run a new water line right through it, and that sleeve stays in place. So it helps us in the long term, but also protects the county road in that mindset, too.
Thank you, Justin. Couple of things. So I did talk to someone from Mead County, and they do a variance, and when I talked to Megan, we could do somewhat, it was called an encroachment agreement. Based on what I've talked with Joe and Megan, there's got to be some specifications to that if we decide as a board that we want to give him an encroachment agreement. The liability would have to come with the land, not the LLC. The specifications would have to be up to highway specifications for that sleeve and that water line, basically 811. The landowner would have to pay to make sure that line was notified, so if anything happened with that line. I think there was one other thing, but long story short, with ag, there's two livelihoods to ag, and two of those major ones are roads and water. This has been done before. They are doing it in Mead County as well, and they've had good luck. I asked also if they've had any problem, have they had any breaks? Have they had any issues with these water lines underneath? At this point, they said no. They would have seen them, they would have been on record. So for me, and for not only Justin, but for the ag providers, I have talked to a couple other ag producers, same thing. These encroachment agreements are going to be huge, and if they're done correctly, and we are doing the specifications, they can be huge for Pennington County for our landowners. So for me, I would hope that the board at this time could not only help Justin, but move on with ag. That would make a huge difference on these encroachments. So I don't know if Joe wants to speak to this, if he has any other specifications or any issues with this happening, or Megan at this time.
And Joe did mention that, you know, his concern is for liability to the roads, and I can acknowledge that, I can appreciate it. And I guess I'm, what we're trying to do, from the way Mr. Richter talked, we're trying to do everything possible to prevent any issues with the county, and we will more than be glad to have 811 notified, as well as have that water, that board, I guess, attached to the real estate so that it stays with that land and not just specifically with us, so that future issues can ultimately be tied back to whoever the future owner is if it ever changes hand.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskin.
Justin, can you share with the commission your conversation with the lieutenant governor relative to this request?
Yeah, so my initial call was to the lieutenant governor, prior to even contacting Commissioner Lassiter, just due to the fact that I know the lieutenant governor is also a rancher, and from what Joe had said, he's had to turn people down in the past. So this was not something that we went into blindly, thinking that it might not happen. And Joe said, this is not personal, this is just where he has to stand on it, and I can appreciate that. But ultimately, at a state level, this needs to get changed too, not just for our sake, but for anybody else that's trying to do this too. There needs to be some flexibility, and if I can maybe paraphrase Joe a little bit, he said that, basically, the state's attorney said that the language was something to the effect that the language allowed for public utilities such as West River Lyman Jones or Alwanka Rural Water to be able to be in the public right-of-way. But that's ultimately because then the county has somebody to go back to, where when it goes to a private individual, they're worried about a change in hands. And so each county should be following the law like Joe is, basically is what it amounts to. Mead County has created a variance to get around it. Maybe not every county is following it to the T that it maybe should be at this time, but there needs to be some flexibility. Like in our situation, there's not other options, and we need to be able to get water on that other side.
I mean, if I could, there's some history on it that I didn't get to finish, I apologize. The history for it, and creating this, if I'm correct, is because there was bigger companies, rural companies, that were opening and needed to be, needed to have some legislation to govern them. So it wasn't to, if I'm correct, it wasn't to limit private industry or private people going underneath the lines was the issue, or underneath the roads. It was because of all of the issues they were having with the bigger companies going into the right-of-ways. So unfortunately, that made a law for them, but it never, ever said that they wouldn't, because they've been doing this for a long time, putting water lines underneath roads. It wasn't to limit or have people, that ag producers, not be able to go underneath roads when they needed to have their livestock watered. So I didn't see any law, maybe Megan found it, that it says that private landowners going underneath roads were causing issues, or that was the major reason. When I looked it up, it looked like the legislation was done because of the bigger companies. It wasn't because of private landowners.
Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office. So I haven't looked at the legislative history behind those statutes. It's sometimes difficult with older statutes. Our newer ones, you can actually watch the video, and you can watch the legislatures talk about why they enacted statutes. With older ones, we don't have that access to records like that. It just basically says, well, we passed it, and this is who voted for it, and this is who voted against it. It's not as good as it is today. We can actually look at statutes and see exactly why legislatures pass their statutes. So I can't say 100% sure that you're right or wrong, Deb. I just don't know, because I do believe that these statutes were passed before the time that they actually recorded all of the discussion about the statutes. Now, insofar as the authority to allow or disallow that, this particular request, a private line underneath of a public road, there isn't anything in statute that says that we can do it. There also isn't anything that explicitly says that we cannot do it. The state's attorney's office is concerned about liability to the county for creating obstructions within public roads.
So Ms. Megan, that's, I guess, where my point was, and I did ask someone that was with the legislation and why that came about, because they knew the history of it, and that's why even in Mead County, they ended up doing what they did, because county regulates their roads. We do have state statute, but if state doesn't say that county can't do it, it doesn't mean we can't. It means there has to be some kind of legislation that says that private landowners, because of liability, we do not let private landowners encroach.
So it depends. Under Dillon's rule, you can only, as counties or cities, well, some cities are different, they have a little bit more authority, but counties for sure can only do things which state statute explicitly allows them to do, or which can be inferred therefrom. That's a pretty, I mean, that's a rule that's been in existence since the beginning of the country. So it depends. I mean, if you can find that there is some authority for us to do this, or if you can infer it from authority that we already have, that's the closest that we can get, because there isn't anything that explicitly says that we can do it.
Ms. Megan, why I'm saying that is we do that through the variances, through state statute, through planning commission and other things, that why wouldn't it be another authority, in a sense, to be able to do it through the highway department like they do with a variance, because it doesn't say specifically that we cannot do it? And we are county, and county has to do a lot with ag. And our number one thing in South Dakota is ag. So if we're going to help the business of ag, is what I'm saying this for, guys, is this is something that Pennington County, for me, is a no-brainer. If we have ag producers, it's not going to be, like I said, it's more like a variance, it's an encroachment agreement. It's not like we have to agree to everyone, because there might be a different circumstance where the guy's just, I don't want to do it, or the lady. But in this case, he went all the way to the legislature or to your lieutenant governor going, okay, they do it over here, I need some help with this. So I believe, and I have talked to you, Megan, so I will say, that if we would like to do an encroachment agreement, we could, for Justin to be able to continue to do business and water his cows and do what he needs to do, and then look into it further, so we get it more specific, if I'm correct. But Megan, I'll let you speak to the rest of it.
Yeah, so, and I'd just like to clarify, a variance is a little bit different than this. So variances, there are specific statutory authority for variances to our own ordinances, so to county ordinances. So this board, for planning purposes, can decide that in certain planning circumstances, because that's really the only place that variances are applicable, this board can decide, because of special circumstances, on this property, we are going to grant you a variance.
So Ms. Megan.
To whatever rule that we have. So this wouldn't necessarily be a variance. This would be the board granting them the ability to put something underneath of a road with, in a condition that they entered into an encroachment agreement with the county.
So Ms. Megan, it is ordinance 11, which this agreement, or this encroachment in this.
Yeah, and the thing is that variances only apply to planning ordinances, they do not apply to any of our other ordinances.
So ordinance 11 doesn't apply towards getting a variance for an encroachment?
Yeah, I mean, it's not a variance. I mean, ultimately, you can only get variances to planning ordinances, because it's only under 11-2.
So I don't have a problem of granting this today, but also at the same time, if we need that specific authority, I would ask Megan and the state's attorney's office to draft the amendment.
Yes.
That we need for the legislature, and I will locate legislators to introduce that bill.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. We can start working on that to try to get the state statute changed, because ultimately, the state's attorney's office, I mean, we don't want to stop, we don't want to stop farmers from being able to water their cows, but there just really isn't the authority for it right now. So we're pretty hamstrung by state statute.
If we wanted to do the encroachment agreement, do we know the specifics? We said 811, we said liability with land. The specifications for the engineering, Joe, are we missing anything that that encroachment agreement would have to have besides those three?
So I've started drafting the encroachment agreement, and once it's done, we'll probably go into executive session, so you guys can approve it and then come back out.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskin.
You know, when I have to make a decision like this, obviously look at the risk involved with that, the risk of the county, the liability inherent to the county, and with the installation of the sleeve for the water line to go underneath, you know, I think you've reduced that risk where I don't really have a concern, so I- where I don't really have a concern. So I appreciate you going and put that extra effort to install that sleeve.
Well, and, and you can thank Mr. Richter for that because that was a specification he had even before we started. So that was intent from the, from the word go. So he, he, you know, he was the one to push and to do it right. And that's why we have him. It's because he wants to get the job done right.
Mr. Richter, would you come forward?
There you go.
I'd, I'd just like to ask you to explain the process that you have to go through to do that.
So before, we've put a lot of boars underneath the roads. We've always got, okay, we had to be licensed and bonded. The county carries our bond for, I think it's two-year bond. We put, we go in, they'll drill the, the bore across, we'll pull back what's called a yellow mine. Yellow mine would be almost like a scheduled 120 PVC. It's very thick. It's pinned together. They pull it back. So you don't have much room between the sleeve and the material you're pulling back and it's tight. We'll be six foot below the bottom of the ditch. So I looked yesterday at that spot. It's about four foot from the ditch to the top of the road. So it'll be 10 foot below your road bed. We dig it up 10 feet on each side of their fence on their property and push our pipe through and it's all connected and gone through. Usually we'll leave a, enough pipe back. So when we pull it through, there's no couplings there. There's no point of, you know, a process where it could, you know, fail. The pipe is a DR 11 pipe. It's 200 PSI. It's got 400 pounds of bursting pressure. It's HDP pipe. The sidewalls are about a quarter inch thick. It's the best pipe you can buy right now. We've done a lot in Pennington County. I got sleeves underneath the interstate for the same way. And we've never had an issue.
How long have you been doing it?
I started in 2010.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
What's the diameter, outside diameter of the pipe?
The outside diameter of the water pipe or the yellow mine?
Just the pipe.
The pipe we're putting in is inch and a half. Outside diameter would probably be about an inch and, oh, we'd be pushing two inches outside.
So that's just like a black poly pipe?
Yes. Yep. It's the stuff everybody's putting in right now. And it's just 2,000 foot roll. So you don't have a lot of devices and.
Four, six inch lines or?
Excuse me?
Four to six inch lines or what is the line on it?
The sleeve will be a four inch sleeve. So it'll just be have enough room so we can just slide our pipe in and pull it out if ever need to.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
So from what I gathered from the information is, I, I was going to offer to bring the encroachment agreement to the next meeting, which would be the 18th. But it looks like you guys got some drafted already. Am I right?
Sorry. So it has.
So we could make decision today?
Yeah. My recommendation would be that you approve them to do it with the condition that they enter into the encroachment agreement because I would prefer if, if that encroachment agreement was in place because otherwise the county has no protection from liability.
That's what I was trying to get at. So.
Yeah.
So do we need a table, Mr. Chair?
I'm still.
Sorry, go ahead.
So it sounds like we can move forward today. And, and I think.
No, we can. Hold on a second.
Sorry, Boyd. I wouldn't be ready today. I've started drafting it. It's almost done. But Jay and Tracy both need to look at it before.
Okay. So I, I was on track of looking at, I was going to ask the applicant if he was okay with October 18th continuance. I mean, that would give them the chance to get the encroachment agreement. It sounds pretty positive for you. So that's.
Yeah. I, I mean, we're, we're ready to dig. I guess we're not ready to bore. We want to keep trenching the water lines is what it amounts to. Mr. Richter's got multiple other people lined up and he's sitting there on our place waiting to go. This all just came about last Tuesday. So, so yes, we, we can wait if that's ultimately what it takes. We, you know, we'd like approval today so that we could know that we can move forward and move his business along as well and, and, and continue on the path. But if that's the holdup, we can live with it, I guess, for now.
So I guess that's what a commissioner needs to make that motion to have him draft it and bring it to the October 18th meeting.
So Chairman.
I think.
Megan, can you tell us, you said you were.
Commissioner Lassiter.
I apologize, but I thought we were going to, she was going to have us go in executive session so we could talk about it and then move him forward. Chairman.
So the encroachment agreement isn't done. My preference would be to have a finished product in executive session at the next meeting. So that way it can be approved and signed on the same day.
And I misunderstood when you were talking up here. I thought you said we were going to go in executive session today, come out after we made the motion that we agreed with the encroachment and then you were going to bring out, we're going to.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the agreement isn't done. So.
Okay, I apologize. I misunderstood you, Ms. Megan.
No, that's okay.
Sorry, Chair. I apologize.
Commissioner Lassiter.
I was going to ask some clarification on that, but now that I understand, I'd like to make the motion that we have the State's Attorney's Office develop an encroachment agreement for this particular issue.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Did you get that?
Yeah. Do you want to put in there and bring it back to the October meet, October 18th meeting or?
Yes, ma'am. Once, once I said it, I was like, I didn't put a date on there, but yes, I'd like to.
Okay.
To be continued and to be finalized on the, on the October 18th meeting.
That's okay with the secondary.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further public comment in regard to this? Thank you, Justin and Tyler. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. And just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, you, you said that you would be possibly getting something put together to go to the legislature, to the state legislation? Okay. That, that would be my ultimate goal is to not just help us, but help everybody else down the road too. So make Joe's easier too. So Joe's job easier.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Justin.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you, Megan.
Mr. Chair, before he starts, before Joe starts, I, I request an exception to the rule to be able to make a comment on item five, the minutes regarding the September 23. I think we need to address what was said.
Anybody have objection?
Do we have to rescind or do something to go back to that motion, to go back to number five?
I don't know. We need to redo the motion, but I'd like to comment, you know, exception for the rule to be able to make a comment about it.
I think you need to go back to number five to do that. I guess it'd be my recommendation that the board make a motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah.
Which would take a two-thirds majority vote and you would be able to comment. And you don't need to undo the motion.
No, I just want to make a comment.
So make the motion.
I'd make motion to suspend the rules. Just suspend the rules for comment?
Comment, yes. For item number five.
Item number five.
Is there a second? Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
The public comment that was made during that, during that item kind of threw me off. I was kind of shocked. And I think as many of you were, to have someone come up and call somebody a domestic terrorist in front of us, I think was inappropriate without background and so forth. I was, you know, later on in our, on our agenda, we have our rules for public comment. And, you know, it's, this public comment's been up several times and, and we're not supposed to, they're not supposed to engage in repetitive comments and refrain and yield from the floor. I, I mean, I'm sorry. I just felt it was inappropriate. And next, coming up on our agenda is some amended rules for public comment. And, and one of them is not to attack other people. You know, I, I'll look it up before we get to it, but I'll bring that back up, you know. It's not to attack commissioners, make comments to which commissioners and so forth. And I felt what Mr. Ellsworth did was inappropriate. I just wanted to make that comment. I don't know if anybody else has.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I agree with you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lassiter.
My only comment is, is going to be this. If you come in, you're going to bring an accusation like that. Y'all know the biggest thing that I have is, if you're going to make an accusation, you better have evidence to back it up. And he came and made a statement and didn't even have evidence to say, hey, I would like y'all to look into it. Here's the evidence that this is an issue. This is, this is what the situation is. He just made the statement and walked away. I have a problem with that. So as much as I have a little bit of understanding that the public doesn't understand some of the decorum, but there's also an aspect, if you're going to make an accusation, you got to have the evidence. And I can't take it seriously if you don't have the evidence. And I think I've made that clear on many occasions when other statements have been claimed as well. So that would be my, my two cents on that. I think it was inappropriate if you don't present evidence for, for us to look at to then make a determination whether it's legit or not.
Chairman.
Go ahead, Guy.
So we always appreciate public comment up here and we'd like people to comment if we're, you know, have things that need to be changed. And they say minutes are different things. So I do appreciate people coming up and, and doing their comments and making us better commissioners in what we're doing, what we're looking at and how we're looking at it. We appreciate that. But when we see a lot of nonsense like that, it becomes nonsense because it's just inappropriate. So I agree with the other commissioners that if people have some legitimate reasons to come up, and of course, Mr. Ellsworth can call it legitimate, but it just seems like nonsense after a while. So I didn't really listen to him too much today because of that reason. He's not giving the facts. He's just making a statement which has been sent by Christian Lassiter. So making statements in front of people doesn't find solutions. It, it causes more controversy. So again, I believe everybody up here on this commission believes in public comment and people commenting on different things that we do up here and appreciate that. But again, accusations and innuendo, pretty soon I stopped listening to that person because there's no facts. So today, I can honestly say his nonsense, I did not listen to today. But I do appreciate other commissioners coming up and, and saying the same thing. So.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So if I understand it, he was addressing that towards a county employee?
I don't know if the person is, is the person a county employee?
Yeah.
Was it a county employee? If that's the case, wouldn't that, if you follow a procedure, wouldn't you go through human resources to get, weed that out before it comes to the commission?
I think he made a threat. So isn't that something we should look into? He just called one of our employees a domestic terrorist.
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty serious.
Lloyd said it on the record here. So if that's what he said, I think we should look into if that was a threat that he's thinking and we should follow through with that to make sure that employee is okay. And, you know, that's a pretty big, pretty big statement.
It is. And I, and I don't disagree with, we should follow, follow through with it. And accusations like that have no place here.
Right.
I would suggest that Mr. Ellsworth coming in may have been his last time to be able to, to do that.
I agree.
Because of his accusation.
If you're going to put nonsense, Chair, up there and, and make a threat about our employees, we're done. So.
I agree.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I just want to read item number two before our revised public comment rules. Comments must be directed to the county commission and not to individual board members. And I would, when we get to our revision of this, probably should be employees. I, I don't know. But this isn't the first time he's brought this up. And that comment that he made, I believe, was really inappropriate, as everybody has said. But I think we're all on the same page with this. And I appreciate you letting us bring this back up and to have a little discussion on it.
Good point, Lloyd.
Item number 15, this is time for the public hearing on the five-year transportation plan. Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. In front of you, hopefully everybody's had a time, a chance to, to look at it. There's a lot of information there. We've got a lot of projects in the next five years. This, I'll just lead with this is a requirement of the DOT as part of the bridge improvement grant program. They require us to, to put a five-year plan together. This has kind of evolved over the last couple of years. We've always done one since 2015, since the, the big program was in, put in place. The last couple of years, we've had to have it in front of you and have a, a public hearing. We invite all the townships to come and, and say their piece. With that, are there any questions before I get into some of the, the bigger projects?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
I have three that I'd just like to go over real quick. On the Rochford Road that we did the base stabilization last year.
Yes, sir.
Are we still looking at maybe doing a chip seal for 2023?
Most likely, what the plan is to do that when Rochford Road or South Rochford Road is paved. So we can have a, a complete asphalt loop. If we pave it prior to that, we kind of create an island out there. Currently, Lawrence County is doing the island in Rochford for us. But I don't know that they would be willing to, excuse me, do, you know, eight miles of that. So once we get South Rochford Road paved, which is planned for 24, the paving of that, we would chip seal it that same year.
Okay, that makes sense. And then on the Bogus Jim Road, realignment, would that be in front of Jim Quinn's property that we met that one day where he was concerned on vehicles going off?
Oh, so we've already actually fixed that. We fixed the in slope on that and I believe it's worked. I, I haven't spoke to Jim specifically about that item since that, since then, but I believe we fixed the issue. This is actually back further towards the back of our county portion where the road gets very narrow. I think it's 16 or 17 feet. I don't know Sean. About, yeah, 17 or 18 feet. And if we're going to put a chip seal on that, we want to get that wider. We did actually just get the purchase agreement from the Forest Service. So Scott Guffey can go get the trees cut off, cut off of the, the slope that we want to cut back. It's about two or three truckloads of, of timber that I believe that Scott will get off of that. And that'll be revenue for, for his budget once he gets those sold. So we're, we've been really good at working with Scott on anywhere we need trees taken off. So I think it helps him, it helps us and it helps, helps.
So we'd be pretty close to Mead County with that project?
With Bogus Jim?
On that project? Yeah.
No, that's not with Mead County.
At the end of Bogus Jim, isn't that a, but we're getting close to Lawrence or Mead County in one of those?
No, that's almost right in the middle of Pennington County.
Okay. You mean on Bogus Jim?
Yeah. It's quite a ways from Mead County.
Okay.
It goes into Forest Service Road after the cattle guard back there.
And then the Slate Prairie base stabilization, where would that start and where would it end?
I, I believe would be doing the entire project, the entire course.
So from Mountain Meadows to Alexander?
So you're talking, that's Gillette Prairie. You said Slate Prairie. Slate Prairie is from the corner of McVeigh and Deerfield all the way to South Rochford.
Okay.
About seven miles there, I believe.
Off the Deerfield Road to South Rochford?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Joe, I'm a little confused on the Bogus Jim Road too. I thought we only had about two and a half miles or so of.
We do.
And then who's, and then it becomes Forest.
Turns into Forest Service. It's turns into Forest Service Road 208 or 202. I don't remember. But it goes all the way through.
That's not, okay, it's not a county line there?
No, no, it's just Forest Service Road. The county line's actually about five or six miles to the, would be to the north.
Okay.
Might not be quite that far, but it's quite a ways away from the Mead County line.
Okay. So that would be on that Slate Prairie. That's where Cade McVeigh lives?
I, I don't know for sure. I believe so. I think.
Really prone to washboard, so.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, any other questions? I don't, I don't see any names signed up for public comment on this.
There's a hand in the back.
Pardon me?
I said I saw a hand in the back into my peripheral. I can't see who it is.
Mr. Ellsworth, do you have something relative to the five-year road plan?
I just talked about public comments.
No.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move to adopt the Pennington County's five-year transportation plan 2023 to 2027 and authorize the chair's signature on the certification, certification form.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment in regard to this five-year plan? Seeing none, back to the commission. Any further discussion on the five-year plan? Hearing is closed. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 16, Joe.
Item 16, item A, I believe, right?
Yes.
I always have, I think I have them labeled right and then I look at it and go, that doesn't seem right. But item A is award recommendation, aggregate stockpile. So the, essentially what I failed to do at the, at the last meeting is I looked at just our portion of the contract and failed to include the, the Forest Service $100,000. So.
So the Forest Service wanted to jump onto this contract. They had $100,000 to spend. The way that works with these types of crushings, we have, we pay the contractor, then the Forest Service pays us. It's just the way that the federal government, from my understanding, has to do things in this sort of thing. So we would just ask for a motion to amend the previously adopted motion.
Okay, so 100 million or 100,000 for the material from the Forest Service, is that U.S. Forest Service or is that the state?
U.S. Forest Service.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
I moved to amend the motion previously adopted on September the 20th, 2022 toward AGG 2022 D S three, aggregate stockpile, Nicholas Creek Timberline Services, Inc., in the amount of $425,850.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any public comment? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is award recommendation for Sherman Street Bridge 246-298. We received bids for this project, I believe it was last Wednesday. The low bidder was Core Construction Services in the amount of $1,41,295. We were awarded a big grant for this earlier this year. The original plan prior to the adoption of the wheel tax was to construct this in '24 simply because we didn't have the, the funding to, to fund the match for, that was required for this project. So with the passing of the, the wheel tax, we elected to go out to bid for this project. We have, the big grant for this project is $547,800. So the original intent of this was to be a 70/30 split between the state and the county. It actually ends up being more of a 50/50 split. So they have changed the rules in the big program going forward into 2023 that they allow you to increase that grant amount up to, I believe it's three or four percent. I haven't verified that because we haven't got into our, our big application for 423 yet, but they amended the rules this year to allow for that inflation in whichever year you're going to, to be bidding it or building it. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Joe. No questions?
Mr. Chair.
Motion. Commissioner Roskin.
That's the only thing I'd like to add is that, you know, I've talked to some of the Silver City firefighters for the Volunteer Fire Department, and they just thought it'd been better to, because they're going to have to take the old bridge down, put a temporary bridge up, and then build the new bridge and then take the temporary bridge down. It gets, they, they just thought it'd be better to put the, the new bridge where the original bridge was in the first place.
So it was the original bridge to the, would be the east of the, the one? I guess I had no knowledge of that.
Anyhow, it was, we talked about it, and I think there was concerns for service easement, but, so if I understand it, though, the project, you would have to put a temporary bridge up while you're taking the current bridge down?
Correct. And they, you know, we have to build a bypass, and we have to do that for pretty much all the majority of the bridges that we have on our system, especially in, up in the Hill City area, the two on Thunderhead Falls. We have to do, create bypasses in those situations also. Core Construction, who's done quite a few bridges for us, actually has a temporary bridge that sits on temporary abutments, basically, that he'll put in. It's very easy installation, so either way you go, you have to do something.
Well, they just thought you could eliminate that process by putting a new bridge in a different location, but anyhow, it's nice to see that they're going to have a bridge where they can, you know, get heavier vehicles across.
Yeah, unfortunately, it was, by the time we, you know, you informed me of that want or, or need, that it was, we're already too far down.
Right.
The process, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lloyd LaCroy.
I'd make a motion to move to award the Sherman Street Bridge as Street 52-246-298 replacement to Core Construction Services, Inc., Hermosa, South Dakota, in the amount of $1,41,295, contingent upon the South Dakota Department of Transportation's concurrence.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Item C, this is a joint powers agreement between Rapid City and Pennington County for the safety project of Deadwood Avenue. Originally, this project was a, just a joint project between the city and the, and the county. The city has moved forward with their portion. I think they're going to be wrapping that up probably in November sometime here. I guess, I don't know where the schedule is on their portion of it. But it dawned on me, you know, we've had a couple of motorcycle deaths on, on what we call Dead Man's Curve there, so we, we approached the state and asked them if we could turn this into a safety project and potentially save the county, you know, a couple million dollars. And in the end, the state agreed to turn this into a safety project, turning what our original portion was going to be about $2 million. We only have to pay about 5% of the, the 10% match required because Rapid City's going to pick up the other 5%. So saved the county quite a bit of dollars there. The intent for the construction of this project is in 2024. We are still in negotiations with the landowner that the current, you know, we only have one landowner left, and he is currently trying to sell those, both of his ranches, so he's not willing to negotiate at this time. So we're hopeful that that process will move forward, and we can hopefully negotiate with the new landowners, so. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Very good.
Yeah, that area is badly in need. Piece that the city has already done is, was really sorely needed, so that's a welcome repair there, so.
Yes. Very hard on vehicles.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move to approve joint powers maintenance and encroachment and financial agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation and the city of Rapid City for Project PH 1757-02, PCN 092U.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any public comment?
So Joe, credit to you guys for taking this to the state and basically saving yourself some dollars that can be utilized other places, so.
That is correct.
Thanks for doing that.
You're welcome.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D.
Item D is a professional service agreement cons, or for construction administration of the Thunderhead Falls Bridges. These bridges are slated for construction in 2023. Our, we've selected K L J Engineering Firm as they're the ones that designed this bridge. The construction administration is part of the big program. We're required to select an engineering firm off of their approved list to administer these projects. It is an 80/20 match, and the reason we're, we're asking for this to be approved now is, is Core Construction has already started to, to submit shop drawings to K L J, so they want paid for the work and reviewing those documents. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Joe. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Move to approve the professional service agreement 1903-02237 with K L J Engineering LLC for construction administration of Thunderhead Falls Road Bridge 52-316-316 and 52-317-318.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. For the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Barry Tice.
Good morning, Barry Tice, the Director of Pennington County Health and Human Services and the Veterans Service Office. And just a little brief summary of the memo in front of you. Yesterday, the exciting announcement was made by the Helmsley Charitable Trust to provide $4 million for the operational expenses of the Crisis Stabilization Unit Pivot Point. And so we were waiting for Helmsley to be able to come out and make that announcement yesterday, hence the vagueness in the memo, but they required us to do that. And so Health and Human Services was the pass-through in 2018 when we completed the study with the National Council of Behavioral Health. And so Helmsley preferred, because they had had their accounting set up through Health and Human Service previously, that this money would be passed through Health and Human Services again. We report back to the Helmsley Foundation once a year, and so this initial amount is for $2 million, and then we'll place a report in October of next year to look at another million dollars and then the following year. And so our partnership with Behavior Management Systems, as you are aware, and hopefully our community is becoming aware, Behavior Management Systems will be in charge of operating the facility. And so they are really excited about this funding because they can continue and start to hire more individuals to work within the stabilization unit. And so that's my overview of some of the pieces that we're missing in there when it comes to Helmsley and their donation of the $4 million.
Commissioner Edgar.
This is, the Crisis Stabilization Unit is, is a, is a great place. It's going to be good for Western South Dakota. We already have said that. Just a question, Barry, so for B M L running it, do veterans, if they're in crisis, can they go there? Do they have to be admitted? And how would they be admitted? Because a lot of times, like in the, you already know, from Hot Springs and, and Meade County, their facilities, sometimes they're full and they can't be admitted right away. Is, is there ways for veterans to get in their crisis stabilization until, when they're in crisis, to move forward? Or is there going to be a different process because they're full, Barry?
Sure. This facility will serve anybody. You, me, anybody else can use that facility. You can be a veteran, you don't have to be a veteran, 18 and over. And it comes with, I say with some limitations, because there's eight crisis care medical recliners, and then there'll be 16 beds. And so with that, and of course, Behavior Management Systems is still sorting out all the policies and procedures and how the referrals will occur, but that definitely would be an option for veterans as well as anybody else in our community.
I'm only asking that because I'm, I'm working with a, a guy that does, works with PTSD vets, and a lot of times they're telling them they're full or they can't get in for 20 days, or, and the people that we're talking about, veterans, need that help right away. So I didn't know if that crisis stabilization was going to be that extra piece until we can move them forward, or, or there's a different process in which we can, we can help veterans that are in that crisis. Because I'd hate to have to see, you know, us turn away through the state, our veterans, and then through the county going, okay, we're full, or you're not, you know, you're not eligible, kind of stuff. So I'll ask you further on that, but it just came to mind that what, what we're doing here is, is going to be a major difference for Western South Dakota, not just veterans, but everybody. But in, in this time, that's one of the needs in our community is for those have to, right now, get that help and move them forward to the next step. So that's not only veterans, but just something that came to mind today.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
No, it's one thing building the facility, and we appreciate the state's help on that, but then it's another thing staffing it and operating it. And so I, I want to thank the city of Rapid City, Monument Health, and the Vicarage Foundation for also putting out financial commitments to, to help keep that facility running and, and doing what it was supposed to be designed for.
Absolutely. We always, we're fortunate, we lead the charge across the state when it comes to the public-private partnerships and demonstrating the success, and I believe that's part of the reason why, with your support, that we continue to, you know, provide the templates to innovation when we're trying to solve different issues we've been working through for many years.
And I forgot to mention an anonymous donor, but anyhow, it's nice to see the private sector participating, too.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
You know, I'll second what Ron and David just said. I mean, the public, the private, the state, there's all working together to do this. And, and the Helmsley, I mean, they, they did the, the study that we needed to show the, the state what needed to be done, and that helped out. But, you know, from being the person to, I've said this before, seeing this come to fruition on North Street, and then all of a sudden over into the crisis care, into the care campus, us taking it kind of into there, shows the support, not nationally of what we're doing here, but statewide. But to see it get its own standing alone building with the support from the hospital, as I said, and many other people is, is just amazing. And Barry, you've been a champion of this from the very beginning, along with many others, but I mean, you guys have worked together on this to get it to where it's at today, and it's just, it's amazing. You know, when we put it into the care campus, I was not happy with the one-point entry for the crisis care center, because I knew these are different types of people, and having it into a standing alone building is going to bring more help to our community, because these people are going to be able to come in and get the help they need. And I just can't say enough, to have a separate building and, and have this process and the money that, that's been raised from the talks of this 15 years ago to where it's at now is only done by champions. And Alan Avi was here, I'd say kudos to him and Sandy Deagle and you and all those that were at the very forefront of this. So it's exciting, and thank you for all you do, and them, too.
I appreciate that, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Sheriff Tomey had to step out, but he's been a huge champion for this work and the work of the care campus and many other projects, so definitely is part of the huge piece to this.
Well, it wouldn't have come about without the cooperation and the partnerships that were created throughout all this. And, I mean, there are almost too numerous to mention as to how it all pulled together, so. It's a neat facility. I will enjoy looking at it when it's fully completed on the inside, even though walls and everything are up. Looks like it's well-designed, a well-laid-out facility for the purpose that it's designed, so congratulations on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move to authorize Pennington County to receive the donation to support the operational expenses for Pivot Point, the Crisis Stabilization Unit, in the amount of $2 million, to authorize the chair to sign the sub-recipient agreement and to authorize the Rogers Office to issue payment on the donation to Behavior Management Systems.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Public comment? Back to the commission. Any further comments? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Number 18, items from Commission Manager Holly Hinnies.
Commissioner, first item you have in front of you is the resolution to appoint two of our members to the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board of Directors. Due to the change in the recent bylaws that were approved at the convention in September, we need to designate two individuals by resolution. So I'm looking for direction from the board today as to who wants to sit on the Board of Directors and who would like to serve as county's proxy. Chairman.
So Commissioner Edgar.
I think Travis should be one of them. He looks up his information, he asks lots of questions, and he seems to know a lot about South Dakota law. He has said it over and over again, so in my opinion, one of those should be Commissioner Lassiter.
Just a little further explanation on it. With the, with the new bylaws, and since I'm first vice president of the State Association, I no longer have a vote on the board. I still can participate, and, but the voting member now coming from Pennington County needs to be selected based on the, on the new bylaws, and that also provides for a proxy. If that, if that voting member cannot be in attendance, proxy member can attend and have that vote, so.
So chairman.
Commissioner Edgar.
You can't be one of those people, did you say?
I could probably be the proxy. I'm not sure of that.
Okay. So for the.
Holly, as you read that, what do you think?
I don't recall off the top of my head that there were any restrictions in the proxy section, but I would have to double-check it.
I, I think you can be.
I think I could be the proxy. I, I believe.
So Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So you could serve as vice president. We could have a, a member, a voting director, and then we could have a proxy. So theoretically, there could be three of us involved with this.
Yeah, one, one vote. One vote.
Right. But I think the, the most exposure that we can get, the more commissioners that we have at these meetings, the more effective it's going to be going forward. So, you know, I'd be more unhappy to serve in one of those, a proxy or a voting director.
Oh, Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
So Commissioner Laster and Commissioner Roskin, are you willing to take those two positions as director and proxy?
I wasn't expecting that one, so I don't know yet. I guess I hadn't given that much thought. I guess I'd be willing to consider that, so I wasn't thinking that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
You know, at the last meeting, I, I expressed interest in either being on the WIR or this voting director. And I think Lloyd's interested in the WIR. So I would be more unhappy to be the voting director, and then if Travis wants to be the proxy, wouldn't be, wouldn't have to go probably there every meeting. But if I am selected as a director, I will be committed to making the meetings.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
You know, I, this was brought up at our last meeting, and that's why I kind of, it seems like the chair, if I remember right, the assignments of the following year to committees and so forth, this is also assigned at that point in time, isn't, is it or is it not?
It, yes, it would be.
It would be. So I think that's why I made the comment on that. It's a decision of the chair to assign assignments, but...
I, I would add with this type of position, though, I think consist, key is consistency. So I personally don't feel that this position should rotate every single year.
No, no.
I think that needs to be the same person for an extended period of time, more than a year.
I, I agree. I was just clarifying process.
It would be looked at at that point.
Because before, you know, before Gary had taken it over, because we, we knew he's heavily involved, we had a bus group for several years, and so I do agree with that. And in the discussions in this, I would support Ron doing it and I'd support Travis as the proxy.
I second.
I, I still think, I still think it's the chair's decision. That's my thoughts, but... Hate to put you on the spot, dude, but process is process.
Well, for the initial appointment, it needs to be done via resolution.
For the initial one, to follow the, follow the bylaws now.
Yeah, to follow the bylaws of the, to South Dakota. So I guess, yeah, I guess that was a motion then.
Okay, so that was a motion.
Yeah.
And a second by Commissioner Haddock. Any public comment? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Travis, like, what?
Okay, the second item is Resolution 2022-C1, which is a contingency transfer of, from the natural, to the natural resource management budget. And I will let Commissioner Roskin explain this resolution.
Mr. Chair, Scott Guffey and I are both on the, through that memorandum of understanding with the United States Forest Services in the process of doing the 15 to 20-year revision on Black Hills National Forests. That revision is going to set the roadmap going into the future of how that, our Black Hills National Forest is going to run. And there's 21 assessments, and those assess, some of those assessments would determine the mono timber that could be harvested. We've already lost one sawmill. And if this doesn't go right, we could lose another sawmill on the Spirit Fish. We could lose another saw, a sawmill on Hewlett. So it's imperative that we get it right the first time. County employees, you know, we have other responsibilities. We can't focus on these revisions and these assessments. So the five counties, Fall River, Custer, Lawrence, Meade, and Pennington have formed together, we're the ones that are involved in this revision relative to the county participation. We feel that we have to hire an outside consultant that can focus on these assessments and make sure that we get it right. That consultant could essentially have to reach out to other professionals to make sure that they get the information they need. But the bottom line, when we sit there and present the assessments from the private sector, and it doesn't align with the Forest Service revision, nobody says we have to go with the Forest Service revision if we don't feel it's the right fit for the Black Hills Forest. There has been situations where they lean towards, you know, other government like the county, and Scott could probably expand on that just a little bit more.
Scott Guffey.
Good morning. Scott Guffey, Pennington County Natural Resources Director. Yeah, Ron is right. I know just over at the Thunder Basin National Grasslands, when they did their plan revision, the counties actually came together and the state with a plan alternative and put that forward, and they actually adopted that one over the one that the Forest Service brought forward. So the counties and the states do have power in this process, and Ron right, is right. It's, it's time consuming on that assessment. And just going through the assessment phase, you know, I was spending nights reading through these assessments because I didn't have time during the day doing my regular job. So now it gets even more time, a, a time commitment when you go into the, the actual revision part, when you're doing the NEPA process and stuff. They're talking like half-day to whole-day weekly meetings with the Forest Service going through this whole plan revision. So I think it's imperative that we get a consultant to help with the counties because we're lucky, we have some staff that can dedicate it like myself, but some of these smaller counties, you know, they don't have the time. So it's, if we can band together and, and come together with one voice, I think that'll help.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskin.
I just want to point out, there's two other counties in Wyoming that are involved with this too. And it's my understanding that the state of Wyoming has offered $1 million towards this for Creek County and West Stone, Scott?
Yeah, the...
And then Lawrence County, $100,000.
The, so over in Wyoming, Creek and West, and the actual, the Wyoming Legislature has got $1 million to help the counties over there. We're pushing something on the South Coast side to help to get, hopefully get some assessments from the state as well. But Lawrence County has already divvied up, Custer County has, and I believe Fall River County is in the process as well, and Meade County has it in front of them as well, so.
So Lawrence County is four years at $100,000 a year, so what we're asking today is $50,000 for one time. This would be administered, administered through the Black Hills Council of local governments, and they would be the one that would watch if this is being spent right, so that if the auditor's got to go back, we've got our teeth dotted and eyes crossed.
One correction on that, Ron. The $100,000 for Lawrence County is not...
For the next four years.
Is not each year for four years. It's $100,000 for the four years, I think.
$100,000 for four consecutive years.
Total.
Total.
Total of $100,000.
Oh, I thought it was a, okay. No, it's a total of $100,000. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
You know, when I first heard about this, I was, I'm like typical people, sticker shock and, and part of being on that end of that board for four years and all alternate, sitting through those four and a half hour meetings and so forth, when that opening come up, I suggested you because, and this commission recommended you, you put in for it and supported you because it is time consuming and of your knowledge of, of what needs to be done, and it's valuable. With that being said, I think this is something to support. After thinking about this over the last couple of weeks, it's, you got to look at the big picture, you know? You guys got to remember, when I asked one of the rangers to come in and give the historical value of the Black Hills, when you looked at pictures of Deadwood and that area way back when, when it first started out, and you seen how bare the, the hills were. And that wasn't from, from logging, that was from wildfires. A managed forest is what needs to be done, and, and I think a good management program needs to, to be implemented. And quite frankly, I think the way the board had operated was in limbo for a couple of years when we had the manager retire and we had an intern. And so I think that, I think there was some data and information that was not, or not processed properly. And so as, as Ron Stady's worked long and hard with the Wyoming people and Randy Albert and so forth, because this is important for us, because this directly affects how we thin our forests for wildfires and keeps us a healthy forest. And, and they've done a good job. I mean, the state, you guys, a local city and so forth, and when we had the pine beetle infestation, everybody got on board and, and we, we figured it out. And this is the same way. We, they want a healthy forest. I know I had brought back some information from the WR conference in Spokane and gave it to the Forest Report, how some of their management programs were working, and it kind of went on deaf ears. So, I mean, with that being said, that's why you need to invest in order to move forward. I mean, we've, I, I, I think this commission and, you know, when I was at the last WR, IR conference, we did a tour of the forests up there in Alaska, and, and the, some of the members from the Wyoming group were there, and they voiced their concerns quite differently from what their concerns, because they have a different forest than we do. So I, I think, I support, well, I know I support this, because I think we need to do this. Coming from a person who's worked 27 years in, in a company that relied on the byproduct of the Forest Services, I've seen the ups and downs. I've seen it when no material, no logging's going on to where, you know, people are getting laid off, and then when things start to come around, they get back better. For us, we're investing in our community, I believe in this, to do the right thing because, you know, if you go down Highway 79, you can count. We got Dakota Panel, we got Purdue Woodworking, and we got Forest Products. That's just the name of three here in our county that, that rely on the byproduct, which is part of what we, I think we need to look at. So I do support this.
Mr. Chair, I know that Randy Dibbert's reached out to the governor and Hunter Roberts, you know, said, we need some support. Could you, maybe not what the state of Wyoming did, but, you know, it's a state problem as well, it's a county problem. So I don't know how much traction that's got, but, you know, we have to work together if we're going to solve this problem.
I think history shows that for those areas that have lost their timber industry, it's basically impossible to get it back. And so you need to put up the fight, try to make sure that you have the material that, that needs to be taken from the forest or can be taken from the forest for utilization instead of letting these industries close down.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry. Just a question, maybe for Ron or Scott. How are the funds, did you make a resolution how the funds would be used yet, or are you doing that with Jennifer, with all five counties?
Yeah, with Jennifer, we, we've identified a consultant. He, Mitch, can't think of his last name right now, right off the top of my head, but he used to work for BLM.
Iverson.
Mitch Iverson, yeah. He's worked for BLM, he was out of Belfus there, and, and I think, I believe that one time he worked for the Forest Service as well. So he's got a long background working on that federal sector, so he knows kind of the ins and outs of the NEPA process and all that. So he brings a lot of expertise to the table. So he, he would be the one that would be hired, and then he would set up an hourly rate and stuff like that.
Thank you, Scott. And just again, and I probably said this over and over again, I trust Scott Guffey. He's the most frugal person in our county, I believe, with our funds. And I trust that if he's wanting to move forward with this, with Commissioner Roskin, is the positive. And I'll, I'll tell you, he'll keep the eye on the money, and he also will keep an eye on anything going on with this that keeps him moving straightforward and, and where they need to go in the, in a direction for this county. So I also agree with this. Again, been with Scott Guffey for a while, and, and he does a great job in everything he does, and he follows through and he works hard at it. So with Commissioner Roskin, I think this will be a positive.
I guess what I want, what...
Go ahead.
What I wanted to point out, these 21 assessments, some of them are relatively short, some are very lengthy, and some are very detailed. And the one that I offered the help on was recreational settings, opportunities, and scenic character of the Black Hills. That was probably 60 pages long. And the way that was put together, it was very hard to navigate through that. And I spent hours and hours on that, and, and I still don't, I just think it's important. That's why this consultant is important, because that's one out of 21 that have to, they're going to have to go through that and, and very thorough and, and have that support that we're going to need when we do the final findings.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion to approve the Resolution 2022-C1 and authorize the auditor's office to issue payment to the Black Hills Council of Local Governments in the amount of $50,000. I got a motion from Commissioner Roskin. Next, that was from...
Commissioner Lacroix. Any public comment? Big none, back to the commission. Now, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Commissioners.
Public comment per advocacy update. Holly.
Yes, Commissioners, this is in response to last meeting's directive from the board that they would like to have public comments given verbally under items from the public recorded in the minutes by listing the name of the speaker and their area of interest. So I have added that to the policy, and I've also clarified several other items that I felt were necessary. So I will stand for any questions or if the board has any changes that they would like to make. I mean, Commissioner Lacroix on number two, I'd be more than happy to add or employees into that if the board feels that appropriate.
I, I believe that's appropriate too. That'd be a good idea.
Commissioner Haddock.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Holly. Nope, you go first. I apologize.
Nope, that's fine. I was just going to let the board know, Deb, Commissioner Haddock had had two suggestions that I felt were important as well, that on our actual agenda for that item, at the end, I would put speaker request form required, and then put a notation in there that it would be recorded by name and subject in the minutes.
Oh, for a public comment?
Yes.
Yeah.
And to clarify, this is only for items from the public. This is not for every agenda item.
Yep.
Chairman, just a question.
Commissioner Haddock.
Ms. Holly, in-person public comment rules as follows. We've had these same five rules since we've started, if I'm correct. And then number six, we were going to add extra. So if you would read the, the five and then, that we have on there at this time, and then the sixth one that we've added, please.
In-person verbal public comment rules are as follows. The chair will invite each speaker to the podium, and their comments will only be recognized after the speaker states their name for the record. Number two, comments must be directed to the county commission and not to individual board members and will add or employees. Number three, comments must be prevent, presented in a professional demeanor and not in a threatening, profane, vulgar, or abusive manner. Number four, comments will be concerning matters within the scope of the jurisdiction of the county. Number five, individuals who engage in repetitive comments will be asked to refrain and/or yield the floor. And number six would be new in that public comments may be limited to three minutes for speaker, dependent upon the length of the meeting agenda as determined by the chair or the county commission.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
I like the way item six was added in there in writing. I mean, this board has done this in the past, you know, when we look at our, at our agendas and so forth, and, and the commission has decided to do the, the three minutes, but I think having it in writing gives clarifications to those who look it up. So appreciate that addition.
And looking at number five, I would like to make a small suggestion and to say individuals who engage in repetitive or threatening comments.
I like that too.
Yep. Good idea.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
I would make a motion to approve public comment period policy update with the changes to number two to add employees and to that item of public comment period rules. And number five, you wanted to add threatening into that.
Comments.
So that would be my motion.
Okay. And a second. Public comment. I've got Rick Wyble on Zoom who would like to speak on this.
Thank you so much. I'm going to caution your Commissioner team to not vote for this and actually get it back to your attorneys for review. And the reason why is items two, three, four.
Mr. Wyble, will you give us a little information on yourself? I don't know who you are.
Sure. And my name is Rick Wyble. I'm actually from Brookings County, but I was going to testify about something else. But because I actually know the law, this is a particular concern for me that you guys are heading down the wrong path, that items two, three, four, and five are actually against the federal ruling of New York Times County or New York Times Company versus Sullivan, a 1964 U.S. Supreme Court case where Justice William Brennan wrote, "Debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open," and said that vehement criticism and even mistakes were part of the price of a democratic society must pay for freedom. So even though you may not like the content, you have to take it. I have been an elected official in the state of Minnesota for 14 years. Luckily, I conducted myself to where during those 14 years, after I was sworn in, I was never sworn out. But there are times that issues do have to be in in some of the earlier comments that were made. Unfortunately, we may dislike it. It is protected speech. You may want to have decorum, but you have to present yourself in a decorum way. And unfortunately, not all the public does that. But from what I've seen of your team there, you guys conduct yourselves very well. But unfortunately, some of your wish list of two, three, four, and five would violate that 1964 case. So I would recommend that you send this over to your state's attorney and table it until they can review it based upon the evidence that I've just presented. Thank you so much.
Two, three, four, and five are not being changed. That has been in our existing.
Correct, but it's a foul at this point in time. And so since you are reviewing the whole thing, you might as well go ahead and re-review those points because it is in conflict with settled case.
Question is to Mr. Wyble.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
What was that case?
New York Times Company versus Sullivan, 1964. Case docket 376, U.S. 254.
Chairman.
Commissioner.
So what I've learned about case law, and maybe I'm not a lawyer, but there are always, you can find case law in everything. Is there case law maybe pertaining to that this is correct? So you might find one case law incorrect and you might find five case law that this is correct. So if we look for case law for individual issues that we're talking about today, I truly believe in what I've seen in my years in politics, it just depends on the case law. So bottom line is you have one example, but do we? And you're right, maybe we need to have Jay look at this. But at this time, I will be voting for it. And then we will have our attorneys look at it, sir. But we've done this and that doesn't mean it's always right in one sense. But the other, to me, it's just common sense that you present yourself in a professional manner. You do not threaten people. And basically, you don't have to be profane, vulgar, or abusive because you're not, people aren't listening to you anyway. And it looks like you're just putting a show on instead of coming up in public comment for a direction or a comment because you think maybe something needs to be changed. Do you need, and I've been listening to public comment a long time and I appreciate public comment. But for me, I'll just tell you, when you start doing things and saying stuff to other Commissioners or you're saying stuff to other public members or to our employees, I think if you are threatening people, I think there's another case law for that that says you can't just stand up somewhere and threaten people and nothing's ever going to happen to you. So you can come up here and act like this and we have to refrain you or yield you. But bottom line is, we also will look at that point because some people do get their stuff out before we stop them, as you know, sir. We will look at maybe yielding that person or reframing that person in the future because if it's a threat to one of our employees or otherwise, we also have to look at that. So there's, when you're talking about case law, sir, there's pieces and parts of this that could be taken in pieces or parts that actually case law can determine that saying these and doing these, two, three, four, and five, might not be everyone, is very good for public safety and public comment.
Mr. Wyble.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that motion?
Sure.
To approve the motion with those changes and also have our attorneys review it. That's just it. Thank God.
Okay. Is that okay with Commissioner Roskinett? Yep.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Rick.
Item D.
Item D is also a policy update for recordings of public meetings and other procedures, or proceedings. So I will stand for any questions if the Board has any for that policy as well.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
I don't see, I think it's, the changes are acceptable. I reviewed them, I think it's okay. I'd make the motion, but I spoke.
You're allowed to make the motion.
Okay. I'd make, move to approve the recording of public meetings and other proceeding policy updates.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Further discussion, public comment. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Need a motion to approve vouchers in the amount of $255,166.62. So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number 20, items from the public. So I have a request from Mr. Chet Ellsworth to address this apparently on access to public records. Come ahead and come forward. Just want to point out to you, the last time that you were up here, you made an accusation against one of our county employees and we're not going to be willing to accept accusations like that now or in the future.
Chet Ellsworth, I understand your policy. I am submitting my affidavit of denial of access to public records. I've given five copies to Holly concerning denial of my access to specified records that are in there on the 20th, on the 23rd. And so without any further policy discussion or any discussions I can add, I'm just submitting this to you in affidavit form and asking if that's your policy also, that you will not take any criticism on my request for public records. I was completely shut out. I did a FOIA-type action to get records. They wouldn't even take it over the counter. The dialogue is in the report. And so not to disturb your policy of letting anybody criticize you. I'll stop. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
I just wanted to read items from the public. Is it, items from the public, is it time for the members of the public to discuss and express their concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its functions? Action will not be taken during this time on any issue brought forth that are not properly noticed. So it's just pretty much saying, public comments, you can discuss what you want and, but we can't make, take no action without good public notice. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Big none. I would take a motion for a short recess, planning to set up the computer. Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, move to go into Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Go into Board of Adjustment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thonison.
I think Commissioner Roskinett is on his way, so go ahead.
Get started. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Item A is variance 22-20 to reduce the required setbacks from a property line. The applicants are Brent and Denise Jirzma. Their agent is Jared Alstrom. Location of the property is west of 12388 Little Tiger Lane. It is currently 8.37 acres. Zoned agriculture district. It is vacant of any structures or utilities. Access is off Little Tiger Lane and there's no special foot hazard area on the property. When basing their recommendation, staff takes into account, or takes a two-pronged approach, prong pro, sorry. Prong one determines whether granting of the variance runs counter to the public interest. I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. They're on the screen if you'd like to follow along. No, the requested setback is nine feet from the east property line. The proposed single-family residence will be constructed 9.11 feet from the property line per the applicant site plan. Number two, no agriculture zoning districts acquire a 25-foot setback from all property lines. It appears that all existing structures in the neighborhood meet the required 25-foot setback. Number three, no. Zoning ordinance requires a 25-foot setback from the property line in an agriculture district. Number four, no. Future land use of the property is ranchette, which also requires a 25-foot setback from all property lines. Number five, no. There's a 50-foot wide access and utility easement that allows unobstructed access to adjacent properties. The proposed residence will not be placed within this easement. The requested setback of nine feet should have minimal impact on the safety, health, and general welfare of the public. The nearest residence is 12388 Little Tiger Lane and it will be approximately 200 feet from the proposed residence on the opposite side of Little Tiger Lane. And prong two determines whether special conditions exist to grant variance. Number one, yes. Topography limits the buildable area on the property. The majority of the flat buildable area is located within Lena Gulch, a large drainage area that flows across the property towards Newton Fork Creek. The proposed residence will be situated on a rocky outcrop above, with elevations dropping steeply into the gulch below. Elevation changes approximately 160 feet from the location of the proposed residence to the drainage area. Additionally, there are 50-foot wide access and utility easements that further limit development on the property. Number one A, yes. Topography and platted access easements create a limited building envelope on the property. Without an approved variance, the only option available appears to be placement of the residence within the large drainage area of Lena Gulch. And lastly, one B, yes. Granting this variance will avoid development within Lena Gulch while still allowing the applicant to construct a residence on the subject property. So this is the map of the subject property. You can see the proposed estimated location of the residence. And here is the proposed site plan that the applicant's agent provided. You can see here it's the 9.11 proposed setback. There is the 50-foot wide private access easement that the applicant's agent was previously unaware of. That's why this item was continued from the last board meeting to relocate that to be outside of that 50-foot easement. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Fire did state that a fire-wise review should be completed on the property and that is included as a condition of approval if this is approved. There were no other objections or concerns received. However, staff did receive public comment and objections. There are members in the audience that would like to speak on this item. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant has requested to allow a nine-foot setback to the east property line due to topographical constraints on the property in order to construct a single-family residence. With that, staff recommends approval of variance 22-20 with conditions.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinett. I agree that. Before you go ahead, I do have two speaker request forms for in opposition to it. And I presume the applicants are here, too?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Roskinett.
I guess what I was going to say is I agree. If you build a house that size and that design, it might not fit in that particular location. But last Sunday, I did a site inspection and I went down Little Tiger Road or Lane and I observed, when you buy eight acres, and I think it was just purchased in the last year or two, when you buy eight acres, you're buying a building site. You've got an eight-acre building site. And I think there are at least two different locations on that property that would work as a building site. So I will not support this variance for that particular reason or reasons.
Okay. Do the applicants want to speak in regard to this?
Hi there. My name is Jared Alstrom, owner of Legacy Construction. Here on behalf of Brent and Denise Jirzma.
So you're the contractor for?
I am.
Okay.
Yep. Basically, what we've got designed here is the proposed. Everything's proposed. If you'll look, if you'll notice at the 9.11 and with observing a 25-foot setback on the east property line, what we're looking at is basically pushing that clear over. And you'll notice the topography lines in the back of the house. We can do some different things there to adjust a little bit, but to try and keep as much latitude in the design process as possible, it would really push us over that precipice with many different designs. And that's why we've, you know, we've put the private access easement in this plan. We weren't aware of that last month or on the last meeting. But anyway, and then as far as addressing the issue of buildability on the other parts of the lot, we were very concerned with drainage. That's a lot of it. And see here, Lena Gulch actually has 100. And this is based on drawings that I've submitted. I don't know if you have those drawings or not.
Jason, do you have any pictures of this area?
I don't know if you have this one. I was not able to find my photos for the site that I did. I apologize for that. I can bring up Rapid Map and I can bring up Google Maps.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinett.
So I realized, we went down there and I actually took pictures. And the pictures that I took could be portions of the land that would be elevated from that draw. And I went to Rapid Map, I did an overlay and none of that eight acres plus is in the flood plain or in the floodway. And if you just go a little bit further south of your property, you're going to see there's a trailer park that's in the flood plain. So I guess I can't side on the danger of that Lena Gulch. But I guess that's when you buy the property, you buy it as is with those expectations or that's just the way I would perceive it.
So Jason, Chairman, sorry. So when you decided that there was two conditional special conditions through the planning department, bottom line, those special conditions again were what? And that's why you guys moved to approve it?
It was the topography and the easements that, for some reason on this.
It was the topography and the easements that, for some reason on this property, that easement is actually, cuts a portion of the property out. And I was not able to determine through equalization why that is. It's a connection, this is a connection of the easements that run through this property that are located here.
So, when you saw those easements, that's why you decided on the special conditions was because of the easements and because of topography, not just topography?
So, I don't think that I was able to do as quite as extensive a site visit that Commissioner Roskinak did. I was able to walk down Little Tiger Lane as well, about halfway down the property. And then that's, I couldn't determine where the property lines were on the other side of the gulch. But to me, it looked during my site visit that there were no other places to build, especially considering the drainage that flows straight through the property.
Okay, so it was the drainage that goes through the property, and based on the easements, he couldn't get the setbacks that he needed?
Correct.
Because that makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
I'll ask her.
Jason, do I read this correctly? There's an individual letter in here about they're opposing this. But there's a statement in here that they, having this home there, will put them within eight feet of their property line. Is that correct and accurate?
No, the request is to reduce the setback to nine feet.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is, is this person says that it'll put their structure within eight feet of the property. I get that the request is for nine feet. How are they getting the conclusion and say that it's going to put it within eight feet?
I would invite them to come up and speak to that. I'm not really sure. So, this is a Google Earth image of the property. Obviously, it doesn't have the property lines, but this would be the proposed location of the home. As you can see, the steep drop-off and then the drainage through the property.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
So, going back to my first statement, you could downsize the size of the house and meet your setback requirements. But that particular design and style will not fit without the variance. So, that was another position that I took, was that you just build something smaller so you don't have to request that nine foot.
Sure.
If you want that particular location, I'm guessing that location is being selected for a view or potential views and for ease of access.
Ease of access as well as views are part of that too as well. But yeah, ease of access and just making sure that we don't build in an area that's, you know, and there's, we always try to consider our clients when it comes to budget. And when we're looking at topography, penetration, where the house is going to go, we don't want to pick up an area where we have a huge elevation change. And like I say, you'll notice in that one topography plan there, there's a very big precipice there behind the house there. And we can change a little bit of how we design things, that's true. But we want to try and get them as much buildable area as possible while still maintaining, you know, setbacks.
Any other questions of the contractor or the owner? Now, I'll go to, I have, is it Tim Moody? Moody? Hey, Tim, come on, come on up. Just identify yourself.
My name is Tim Moody. I live in 12396 Little Tiger Lane, which is just adjacent to the property of the petitioner. And I guess I just wanted to, I don't, I think the discussion of the danger of Lena Gulch is without merit from the standpoint that I live in Lena Gulch. I'm just over the hill, and there isn't a problem there. But I say, I mean, there's plenty of elevation. The question, I guess, is, is it, how are you going to situate your house? Or whatever you're going to build down there. But anyway, I just want to bring up the point that I live up in Lena Gulch. And I, my personal opinion from living there in Signee is, I feel that this argument has no merit.
In what, sir?
Say again.
What was your last sentence?
I said, "I feel the petition has no merit from the regard of the danger of Lena Gulch." I mean, given the fact that I live there, you know, I have a pretty good idea of what exists there in the gulch. Anyway, that's my point. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Moody? Seeing none, thank you. I also have Mark Thompson.
Good morning. I am a neighbor to the east that would be on the nine-foot side.
So, your name and address?
Mark Thompson, sorry.
Okay, and address?
12388 Little Tiger Lane, Hill City. And to the Commissioner's comment earlier about the eight feet, that came from the first proposed prior to the learning of the setback. That was on the north property line. So, the property structure position was repositioned to move out of the easement. So, it is capable of repositioning this. As you guys have learned and seen in this area of the hills, anything's possible. But, so there's also a shelf just below that if it needs to be filled. There's going to be a lot of dirt work to start with to create a build site. That particular plan, if you play around with it, can be repositioned in that spot if desired. There are multiple spots on that eight acres that is also a potential building site. As Tim mentioned, there's Lena Gulch is not, you're talking about a specific center. There are easements down through the bottom of it. There's access above. There's access from the side. I've owned the next-door properties for over five years, know it well. I've seen two, three-inch-down boars with no effect. So, I've submitted two different oppositions to this via email. It's probably in your packets. And so, I'll go on record that I oppose this variance request.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Agar.
Mr. Thompson, are you complying with the setbacks if you are eight feet from their house and nine feet from their house? I mean, are your setbacks eight feet or nine feet from the road? Are you...
Oh, I'm a long ways away. If, I don't know how to operate this, but if you go to an area of you, you'll see my house.
His house would be approximately 200 feet from the proposed location of this house.
Okay. I thought he was saying like you are eight feet from this proposed location. I was like, how did you get eight feet or nine feet away when you have to have a setback?
No, the earlier question by the Commissioner was, there was in some notes, there was eight foot was mentioned, and that was from the very first proposal prior to the discovery of an easement there. So, that eight-foot variance or setback was from the north property line originally. Once they learned of the easement, then the footprint of the structure was repositioned.
So, do you think, Mr. Thompson, if I could ask direct, do you think this proposed house is a danger man in any way? That if they proposed it like it is and we give them a variance? To me, it sounds like my husband is a builder, trying to build off the side of a hill if you don't have to, or put pylons in or anything else because you know, depending on what that bedrock looks like, that could cause you a lot more than you think.
Yeah.
So, my question is, do you think at this point, the size of the house is too big? Or you don't, what is the bottom line? I guess I didn't read everybody's comments, but what is your bottom line with putting his house and where he's putting it?
Well, there's no other houses in the community that are even remotely that close to neighboring property lines. So, just from a setting standpoint, it, my opinion only, that it differs from the spirit of the neighborhood. To answer your question, is there, in my opinion, is there any dangers? No, I don't know of any dangers of that position.
Mr. Chair.
So, hold on, sir. So, what I'm saying is, I guess I've never opposed, and I'm with the staff, a property that puts it on, a property owner that puts their house on their property isn't a danger, isn't a safety factor. To me, trying to build with pylons and make it so it works on the topography when he can find an area with a variance that would make it simplified, to me, makes sense. My, like I said, my concern would be if there's a safety, if there's an issue with that land having to do something with the rest of the neighbors. So, I mean, it's property rights in this sense. But if it was a safety factor or something with you, you also, I believe, had those property rights. But, long story short, I'm not opposed to this house and where it's going for that reason. People have to build where they have to build. It saves money on their land. It makes sense not to go off the side of a hill. And things can be a big house, but it's their land. And if they do it properly, and our staff has looked into that. Jason is pretty thorough on some of his things that he does as well. So, I trust that they made a good decision as well. So, I'm actually for this.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
I guess my point is, you request a variance when there's absolutely no other way you could put... That would be your only alternative, but that's the reason I did the site inspection. There are other building sites on that eight acres, and you would not need a variance request on those other building sites. And I guess if I was going to buy eight acres or plus, if that's what I wanted to do, I would have probably figured it out before I bought the property. So, it's kind of like buy it and then ask for forgiveness and, or now ask for permission. I don't know. I just, I don't, I feel that there's, with those other building sites that I personally inspected, I just don't see the need of a variance. If you want to build that house, that size, in that particular location, you would need a variance. And if there was no other alternatives, I could probably live with it. But I just think there's other building sites on that eight acres.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you. Jason, do you have this picture from the packet on your computer? Did you put it up? I am trying, I'm looking at this, and I see a stake right next to the road, and I'm assuming that's supposed to be the eight foot. I mean, somebody put a red mark on it.
That's the pictures that I, Thompson submitted. I think that's the property pinned.
Okay. So, it would be eight feet from that post, am I correct?
So, that stake that you're looking at would be right here? And that would identify where the 50-foot easement?
I'm sorry, I didn't see where.
Where is it now? Right here. This area.
Oh, that's where that stake is.
Correct.
So, that's where the road is. So, you're still getting your 50 feet from that point back.
Right.
And where this 9.11 is, how much room is there from that corner to the next road?
So, again, this would be your...
That's the, okay, that's the corner. So, there's really nothing, it's to the property, right? Nine foot from the property. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yep.
I was, the way this was kind of drawn out, I was thinking that that corner was where that other edge of the house was going to be. So, that's, it's still going to have the 50-foot easement from the road.
Right.
The part that's going to be nine foot, there's really nothing...
There.
No roads or anything that's going to create a problem.
Correct.
Correct. So, I kind of get where Ron's talking. He could move it over without seeing it, or reduce the size of the house, but I really don't, you're doing, you're keeping the 50-foot setback from the road. So, it's, it'd be keeping the other residents somewhere, what, 200 feet from the road? Quite a bit further hidden back, but, okay, that's what I want clarification on.
Okay.
So, that's on the side of the property, and there's nothing open. The 50-foot from the road is...
Correct.
Being, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Question for you. Jason, I understand on the prong two, question one, and question one being yes because of topography limits. If I designed a house that I felt I could fit in an envelope, I agree with their, if there's a special condition on A, topography. What I don't understand is the B, granting this variance will avoid development within Lena Gulch. How does that do that? How does it prevent development in Lena Gulch?
So, if they were to build on that shelf 160 feet above, then they wouldn't be in that drainage area, suspected drainage area of Lena Gulch.
So, it just keeps them out of moving it to another, with what Commissioner Roskinak was saying, maybe another development site. But we really don't want something going into that Lena Gulch.
Right.
Okay.
I just got one more.
Commissioner LaCroy.
One more follow-up on this for people in the audience. It's not very often that staff approves something like this without investigating.
I agree.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, it's no. So, I think they've been out there, they looked at it, they evaluated it. It's very rare that we get approval from staff on the variance.
Commissioner Agar.
Like to move per staff recommendation with two conditions?
Thank you. Got a motion in a second? For the public comment. Yeah, I'm having a difficult time supporting this all. So, it looks to me like the house that's proposed can be adjusted so that no variance would be necessary in regard to this. And figuring the acreage, figuring what Mr. Moody had to say as to where his house is located, I just don't see the justification for the variance on this.
Chairman.
Commissioner Agar.
Been on this board a long time, and I have to agree with Commissioner LaCory. I think our staff recommendation, they do not grant these very often unless there's good investigation on them. There's a reason why they had put this forward. Again, we have not absolutely always agreed with the staff, and we have absolutely not always thought that things needed a variance because of certain reasons. So, in truth, when you say that, the bottom line is, we do things because it's people's property. It makes sense. And this is one of those things that I think makes sense per staff recommendation because I absolutely think that we've done this before per recommendation on many people's variances. And I believe in the property rights of these people, and it is their land. I don't think they're disrupting their neighbors in any sense of the word from this. If it was, like I said, safety factor or anything like that, it makes sense. But bottom line is, the house is going where it's going because it makes sense because of topography. It has enough setbacks that we usually, in Pennington County, do not have those kind of setbacks for people since I've been in here. So, this is a first for me to look at this, and it doesn't make sense for somebody. So, to tell somebody to move their house or make it smaller because they think it should be that, it should be based on facts and information of, you know, a lot of people that we've had up here could move their house, or move their shed, or move their whatever somewhere else. But if it's not against staff recommendation, which we, like I said, we went against, but it makes common sense to put it there because there's not an endangerment. I guess it's not understanding.
Commissioner Roskinak.
I think if staff would have done a, would have been able to go further into the eight acres down to the areas that I observed that could be built, and if staff would have interviewed some of the neighbors relative to Lena Gulch and the history of flooding, they probably would have had a different result. So, there again, I don't vote for variance on convenience or cost savings. I vote on what the nature of the variance is, and that would, you know, to me, it's, it's... It creates the help of landowner when there's absolutely no other alternatives. And I just see two other alternatives that I just can't support the variance.
Can I respond to that, please? Can I respond to that, please? So, when I did my site visit, that's a large portion of property. The property lines were not marked. I couldn't go across Lena Gulch and identify exactly where the property lines were. I couldn't, I couldn't tell where exactly they were, so I couldn't determine that there was a portion of the property that was outside of Lena Gulch, that there were flat elevated spots to put a house. I couldn't see that during my site visit.
No, I understand, and that's where you, you reach out to the landowner or representative thereof and, and have them point out the property lines, so you know exactly.
Right.
Uh, the layout of the property.
So, I did, uh, speak with the applicant's agent, and he did put together some calculations based on Lena Gulch and average rainfalls throughout the year. I didn't submit those because he's not an engineer, but that was the best available data I had for that gulch. And for me, from planning perspective, it indicated enough of a concern that we don't want to see a house go in that drainage area.
Yeah, I'm not putting staff down, I'm just saying that I was asked to come out by a neighbor who showed me the exact property lines and provided actual historic information relative to the flooding on Lena Gulch. So, I probably had a little more information because, uh, the neighbors were able to provide that. So, I'm just saying that, and that's why I'm taking the position that I'm taking today.
Well, Chairman.
Commissioner Haidkar.
So, I understand that, Ron, but you just did put down the staff. I know that maybe wasn't your intent, but you did.
It was not the intent.
I know, but you did. So, if you knew the information ahead of time, it should have been told to the staff, and this should have been brought up before right now, that you talked to the neighbors, and that if this information should have been given to Jason before this meeting. Was it not pertinent that you didn't have time to?
I visited with Jason yesterday.
Okay. And Jason, you knew all the information?
I did not have, I didn't have time to go meet with the neighbors after getting that information, to go do the site visit and, and reconduct that.
Okay, so maybe this should be continued, or should have been continued based on the information that just came up today, and that information should have been told today, this morning, that it was given this morning, and that the staff didn't have time to do it, not that the staff didn't do due diligence by that information. So, I know that wasn't your intent, Commissioner Roskinak, but it sounded like he didn't do due diligence, but if the rest of the information was applied today that you had talked to him this morning, I think there should have been a continuance on that information.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
So, all the commissioners have a copy of this, and Jason, I had a copy of that yesterday when we met, and I explained the other options, and I explained my position on this variance. So, it's, it's been out there, it's, uh, I don't know what more I can do. It takes a lot of time to put these exhibits together and support my conclusions, so I'm not trying to hide anything from anybody, the facts are right here.
I never said hides.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I, I agree that, I mean, we, we all do site visits and we all come up with different conclusions, and, and trying to communicate that on the backside's a little tough to be doing. So, I mean, you know, I don't think everybody was trying to hide anything or do anything wrong. I think when people come up with their own conclusions, that's what they come up with.
Point of order, please. Point of order, for just to say, point of order.
Point of order.
Why this point of order, I called it, is because, I never said he's hiding, and I never said he did anything wrong. I said he could have done it better, and I told him he didn't do anything. So, just so people don't think I think Mr. Roskinak is hiding anything or trying to do anything wrong, I just said, based on that information and what I just listened to, it sounded like he was trying to beat up the staff a little bit with their information, and that his conclusion was better than what the staff had had. I can understand that, but I don't believe he was hiding anything.
He said he should have came forward with it earlier instead of like?
But that doesn't say hiding, because if you're not hiding it, I would have known, and Jason would have known, and he would presented it and said, Roskinak, did this conclude?
Did I say hide? I thought.
You did.
I, I thought I said that, uh, we all do our own site visits and come up with our own conclusions and present them when time is appro, well, I didn't say appropriate, but I mean, he presented it at the time that.
Well, I, I think you said, no one's hiding anything or doing anything, that wasn't my intent.
Yeah, nobody is.
Yeah.
So, I don't want to see where the point of order on saying that was including.
Because it was said twice, and that's not what I said. I didn't say hiding. I said that we could have had the information a little bit different, and Roskinak could have said it at the beginning, so we understood that he did say some of it.
I used no names.
Okay. It doesn't matter if you didn't say any names, it, people will know that.
Mr. Chair.
I don't want to be misinterpreted again, hiding or doing backroom deals again, or saying people wrong.
I'll come, I'll come back to you after Commissioner LaCroy finishes.
Thank you. That's my point.
Sorry, got taken that way. My point, my point is, is that we do site visits and, and we, we come to these meetings and give our conclusions, and that's what happens. I mean, uh, if we're able to, our, it's our opinions, it's everybody's opinions, so what, it's not facts. My, my point still stands, Jason, is, I, I, it's very rarely that, uh, your office comes to us with approval of a variance. You know, I a hundred percent agree with that. That's why I was asking for, where the stakes were in those views, 'cause I wasn't able to do a site visit to be able to make those determinations. So, quite frankly, you know, I'm not opposed to a continuance on this, to do site visits, but I don't know if that's gonna make much of a difference to the landowners. I guess that would be a question to you, if you would want this continued to, to maybe prove your point, or so other commissioners could do site visits to, uh, 'cause from the looks of it, you gotta have a four-to-one vote to pass this, when you're in the Board of Variants. And so, from the looks of it, I don't think you have a full support. So, you either take your chances now, or you continue, you offer to continue it for other people to move, so you could show them why you don't, can't do what, what you want to do. That would be a question proposed to the applicant.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to point out that I meant nothing, uh, do, uh, against staff. I'm just saying I had the opportunity because a, a neighbor helped me identify property lines, so, uh, just want that for the record. And yesterday, when I sat down with Jason, I explained my site visit on Sunday, and I explained that I saw other areas that the home could be built on, and I explained that if that house is scaled back or redesigned, it could still be in that location, but that particular design and that size, uh, will not work without the variance. If you could build something a little more shifted, redesign it, smaller size, you wouldn't need the variance. You wouldn't even be here today talking about it.
Go ahead.
I think, thank you again for your time. Um, 'cause just kinda looking at all that's been said and whatnot, we, we can always, depending on footprints and, and things like that of the homes, where they're at, we can, we can redesign, but we do try to, like I said earlier, we try to keep the budget in mind for, you know, the topography does generate a lot of costs in the building process, and that's, that's why we're here, we're trying to, 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 to save some, some room, some creative latitude there, that we can give, I can give my client a, a better chance at, at making this, 'cause even, even at this, this is gonna be very, very inhibiting to the, to the plan that I've got, and it's all very, we're trying to due process here, make sure that we have permission before we get started, and, and these are concept drawings. You know, we, we will move things around to the best of our abilities, but it just really does constrain us to, to have to do that. And I do, I'm building a house right now in Rapid City, and we do have eight-foot setbacks, and I'm not on the 101 right now, it's, we're, we're not up to that eight-foot line, I don't, if I had my druthers, I would love to have 25 feet between a property line and a, and a home. Uh, it just, it doesn't always happen to be the best for my client in those, you know, in those cases where I do have that, but that's why we're asking, and we, again, appreciate your time.
Okay. Chairman.
Commissioner Haidkar.
So, Commissioner LaCory is trying to get at that, um, right now, I don't think everybody up here has the understanding of some of the topography and some of the things and the information that Ron had that might be pertinent to help some of this a little bit more, so we can all look at it.
Sure.
So, we're asking if you'd like to continue it, so we all have that time, or today it doesn't look like, um, you have the votes to do the variance, and maybe those might change once there might be a better solution for it, if we all come out and look at it. So, are you okay? Do you would like it continued, or would you like the variance voted on?
I'd definitely, I'd, I'd definitely like to, anybody that would like to come out and take a look at it with me, I'd, I'd be happy to look at it with you.
We'll deal with the continuance, sir.
And have any input that I can on it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Can I give these folks my report, so that they can at least see what I, uh?
Absolutely.
My conclusions? And each one of the commissioners has this too, and if there's something I did that ain't right, would you let me know?
Okay, absolutely, thank you.
They'll move to continue to the next meeting?
Substitute motion?
I've got, I've got a motion on the board, it'd have to be.
Substitute.
Mr. Chair.
Have a substitute, sir.
Yep.
Um, to continue to the next meeting, please.
Begging.
Okay, got a substitute motion, uh, to continue this item until our October 18th meeting? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn as Board of Adjustment and convene as Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Begging.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Uncontested hearings.
Uh, Comstock Environmental Planner. Item B is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CA 22-18. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from Ranchet District to rural residential district. The applicant and landowner is TTG Real Estate, Mike and Lisa Gennaro. Uh, the agent is KTM Design Solutions. Location of the property is 24404 Oak Meadows Road. It involves approximately 10.09 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential, and access is off Oak Meadows Road. Uh, so the applicant is requesting to change the, uh, future land use from Ranchet to, um, rural residential district. There is rural residential district in the area. Uh, this applicant came in several months ago to vacate a portion of a section line on, on the little tiny, uh, triangle piece down south, uh, not realizing that that, even if you vacated the section line, it wasn't a buildable lot. Uh, so what he's doing is, he's in, he's going through the planning process to incorporate that lot into the eastern lot and part of the northern lot, uh, which kicks this rezoning comprehensive plan amendment into, into place. Also, staff is recommending approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CA 22-18, with the Planning Commission's concurrence.
Nope, I'll, uh, move to approve. Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any public comment? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, rezon, same property.
Item C is Rezone, RG 22-24. It's to rezone approximately 10.69 acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. Again, the applicant is TTG Real Estate, Mike and Lisa Gennaro. The agent is KTM Design Solutions. Uh, it is the same, uh, property as item B, and with, uh, the board approving the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, staff would recommend approval of Rezone, RG 22-24, with the Planning Commission's concurrence.
Any questions?
I will.
Got a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the rezon. Any public comment? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item D.
Item D is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CA 22-19. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from Ranchet District and rural residential district to low-density residential district. The applicant is Free Range Rentals LLC. Davis Engineering is the agent. Location of the property is 23707 Burnt Fork Road. Involves approximately 7.2 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Uh, this was continued from October 11th, uh, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission had some concerns with lot, the lot sizes, and they had preferred to see rural residential, uh, compared to low-density residential based off of the acreage, thought they could fit two lots in there with rural residential, where if you rezoned to low-density residential, they had concerns that you could go down to 14 acres, or 14 lots in that, um, that area. So, they recommended to, uh, continue that. Uh, staff has emailed the owners about the comments from the Planning Commission meeting about doing two, two lots instead of the three lots and rezoning to rural residential. Uh, so staff is gonna recommend to continue this comprehensive plan amendment, uh, to the October 18th Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Begging.
Got a motion and a second to, um, continue. Any public comment? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Rezone of the same area.
Uh, yeah. Item E is Rezone, RG 22-25. It's to rezone approximately 7.2 acres from agriculture district to low-density residential district. Uh, same applicant as the previous request, and staff is gonna recommend to continue our Rezone, RG 22-25 to the October 18th, 2022 Board of Commissioner meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Public comment? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Relative to the continuance of that, uh, variance, I would ask that if there's a site inspection done by the commissioners, that one of the neighboring property owners can be invited, so that you're looking at the same information that I am.
Is that on this one?
On the previous, on the?
Previous.
No, on the?
On the variance.
That was before the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, item F.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Moll, Planning Director. Item F is Vacation of Right-of-Way, VR 22-02, to vacate a portion of right-of-way on Apple Tree Road. The applicant and owner is Scott Moore. The agent is Davis Engineering. Uh, the property is located in the Murphy Ranch Development. It is Zon Suburban Residential District, and it has no special flood hazard area on the subject property. Uh, the reason for the request to vacate this right-of-way is that this tract was originally part of some drainage improvements for the Murphy Ranch subdivision. Um, the current owner would like to put, um, some multifamily dwellings on this property, uh, and in order to meet the requirements of the drainage and to put drainage improvements, um, he needs this portion of the property, uh, to meet those drainage requirements. There isn't enough, uh, property there to meet the drainage requirements and, um, develop the property, um, so that is the reason for the request to be vacated. Um, this portion of the platted right-of-way does not connect to any existing or future right-of-way alignments. Uh, it's currently unimproved. Uh, the lots affected by this, um, have other access off of Knuckle Duster Road. Um, the only, um, um, item of concern was that once these are vacated, because it's not an approved right-of-way, the underlying land goes back to the original owners. Um, I did receive an email, um, all of you received it, from, uh, Mr. Davis, that said that he was going to reach out to the owners, um, and get this portion deeded over to Mr. Moore, um, once the, um, item is approved. Um, so staff is recommending approval of this vacation of right-of-way with three conditions.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haidkar.
So, Ms., Ms. Brittany, this was original drainage or it wasn't?
Um, it was originally supposed to be a small cul-de-sac with some other lots as part of the Murphy Ranch Development, and it had some drainage improvements on it. And it was purchased by Mr. Moore, and he wants to put some fourplexes on it, and in order to meet the requirements for the fourplex, it adds additional drainage improvements in addition to the ones that were already required as part of this development, so in order for him to fit it in there and meet the requirements that Mr. Coles wants with the city and, um, Sean would like with the highway department, he needs this additional space.
Okay.
Uh, to fit the drainage improvements.
I appreciate that, Ms. Brittany, because I remember the drainage issues, and that's why we couldn't do it in the first place, and then you brought it fa, back with some solution, uh, with Sean probably, and you guys, which I appreciate as well. Um, so again, you're taking that out so he can do more, or basically do his drainage for the future in that area, 'cause Murphy Ranch in that area does have many drainage issues as we know, and that would improve that area or just his property for drainage?
Both. So, the original, um, plat had some drainage improvements for the overall development, but with his additional fourplexes, it required more.
Okay.
So this would allow him to fit the drainage improvements in that site.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lassiter.
Brittany, I got a question. So as I look at it and I see that it's just that section up there, um, how does that impact the whole? Because, I mean, if you, if you do just the drainage fix there, going north and south, I mean, is it just going to come down and then get into a really good area? And then all of a sudden go back to bad? I guess maybe that's what I'm not understanding off of this. It's only a small section that's going to be allowed to be worked on, right?
Right, and there's other drainage improvements up. Uh, if you look at where it says Black Powder Road, there's a large kind of a boot shape lot that's actually drainage improvements. And currently, um, Site Works, um, is working on those like kind of jiggedy lots below. They're going to plack those out. So they are working on additional drainage improvements in those, so they'll connect through that, um, to the south. Uh, they're down in here. They're, this has future plating. This is phase ten, um, so that'll have additional drainage improvements too as part of that planting.
I'm sorry, the last part you said, Brittany? We'll have one.
Um, there'll be some more drainage improvements as part of this too.
I might be able to answer Travis, Travis's question here. Joe, Pennington County Highway Department. So when Sean first kind of caught this and brought it to Dan Coles' attention with the city, um, there's a lot of, there's an overall, when Murphy Ranch was first conceptualized, an overall drainage plan and they've slowly been changing things. So what we've been trying to do is refer back to that original drainage plan and, and, and make them have an overall drainage plan. And this meets that overall drainage plan to my understanding, so.
Okay.
So that way, there's a, there's a big picture to the overall development, not just this specific lot. Those drainage improvements on this lot are a part of an overall drainage plan.
Other questions?
Move approval.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second? Any public comment? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Items from the chair, commission members. One thing I have in that area is that, uh, both Commissioner, um, Adcock and myself attended the, uh, the announcement at the, uh, new minerals building at, uh, School of Mines. And, um, it's called construction and is now able to move forward, was starting the construction on that. It was the groundbreaking, uh, for that, the New Core Building. And, uh, which is going to be quite a, uh, an enhancement, uh, to that campus. Um, now my problem with it is, is the cost from earlier this year, what that was projected, I think at about thirty-four, thirty-five million is now at forty-one million. But they're, they're still, uh, raising money and it's, it's named the New Core Building because, uh, the company New Core, uh, based out of the East Coast. But they have clients all over the United States, including one in Nebraska. Uh, they contributed five million, uh, towards this, so. And they have, uh, New Core has, uh, lots of alumni graduates from School of Mines that are in their employ. So, any other items just to come from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Um, just so you know, uh, I met with the EPA, South Dakota D A N R. And we're going to submit some dates when I get finalized from them to host another community, um, meeting here concerning PFOS, PFO and some updates from EPA, SEDIDA, and the base concerning that water contamination and what, where they're at. Uh, we're looking at March. Holly gave me some dates. I sent them to the, to the group so that they could figure out what would work for them. And then they'll let me know for sure and then they'll come and ask you for, for us to be able to host that again, um, for the community. But the expected timeframe is going to be in March because it's about a year from the last time, depending on what date they, they choose. Outside of that, um, you know, Ron and I did the mining meeting. Deb and I and Joe were out in scenic, I think we kind of talked about those already. Did we talk about those at the last meeting for some reason, our special meeting? For some reason, I think we did. Um, I met with, on Thursday, I had a Zoom meeting with Matt, the gentleman that came up here about the, um, um, special hearing. So I didn't have to go into that in, in detail. And then, of course, I've spent a lot of time just talking with Justin Ury last week, so that's about what I had going on.
So, Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Are we talking about stuff that's not on the agenda, right?
Right.
Okay, so, um, the ME building, um, that was pretty, was pretty awesome, Gary. Um, just the whole presentation and the people that worked on it. Dave Johnson did a lot of work for legislation on it. Um, New Core is a copper, if I'm correct, Gary Copper Mining?
Steel.
Steel, okay. For some reason, I got a lot of copper stuff in there for some reason. Um, but that was pretty amazing. My niece came back. That's one of the things that she wanted to go do and she had Cassidy that was studying to be an ME. Um, all invited me to that as well, so I thought that was pretty cool. I also went and visited, um, some of the other areas, um, where they're making stock cars and, uh, Baja cars and different things in, uh, School Mines. So that was pretty amazing. And seeing the milling they do, and I'm not probably using the right terminology, but they take steel and they do different maneuvers with computer, computers and stuff. Um, it's pretty amazing what they can do in this, this one machine. And I, I should have wrote some of this down. Ended up, it, it has this cord on it and it, and it builds these materials up and it reminds you of when you use the, the hot glue gun. But they actually have a stream or like a big thing that makes these, uh, different, um, things that they make. And it looks like, but it feels like rubber is what it feels like. But it was just amazing to see all the things that the School Mines did besides, and not that we didn't know that, but I didn't really see it for myself in just the stock cars. And they had, like I said, Baja cars and then the ones that go on the street, um, that race and all the different things they do with the mechanical engineering as well. And then, um, the meeting that Travis is talking about, uh, we met Joe and, um, um, Sean out at the volunteer fire service department. Two firemen that, um, Matt Bowen and Trevor Hatch wanted to talk to Joe about the road on Sage Creek Road. Dan, can't remember his last name. He was the guy that's been, um, doing the, um, blading for thirty years out there. Um, they had a really good meeting. They came to some really good solutions. They also, um, talked about the, um, what's called base stabilization. Uh, we sent videos to these, uh, particular people. Um, I appreciate Joe and Sean finding that solution with them on, uh, some of that shoveling or shoveling, blading. So, um, really good meeting, um, on Forest Sage Creek Road. It's one of the well, most traveled roads for the farmers and ranchers out there. And they, they wanted to see if they could find a solution of how they could get that done a little quicker. So Joe and Sean did a really good job. Um, just one of the meeting and, um, just the fire service board again, fire, um, convention, um, things at the, uh, I'm having, I have where to go somehow, I'm a little very far here. Um, their convention out at, uh, in Box Elder at the, what did I tell you Lloyd? What motel? The courtyard.
Or Tiki.
Yeah, the courtyard. Yeah, that's where their convention is.
Where the slide is, the water slide is there. That's, that's where I just.
October eighth. Um, it's going to be cool. Val, thank you Val for all your work and, and the, the chiefs. It'll be a really good meeting. Um, Val's going to have, uh, gifts and stuff for people and do, uh, drawings. So it's going to be pretty cool. Anyway, appreciate everybody that signed up.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Uh, I received, uh, an email, I think it's since the last commission meeting, from Jim Gubels, who's the district ranger for, uh, Forest Service, uh, congratulating us, uh, the conditional use permit is done. And for the Silver, uh, for the Silver City Volunteer Fire Department substation, which would be located on the corner of Highway three eighty-five and Broad Gulch, maybe about a half a mile south of the Sugar Shack. So, uh, they're going to be coming in front of the commission for, you know, the, the request of five hundred thousand dollars that we submitted, uh, that we'd offered for the fire station. But I think what they're trying to do is put the, the agreement together like we did with the other three volunteer fire departments. Uh, Great Plains Proclamation, uh, I think Lloyd forgot to mention that. He did a nice, some job.
He, he hasn't got to that yet.
No.
What, that's a, okay.
Don't steal us thunder.
Okay, Hard Rock Mine, you know, Travis touched on that. We did, we put a committee together. We said, we're going to, two hours, that's it. And I, I was kind of disappointed because I, I invited all the stakeholders, but some stakeholders were there going like, what are the others there like? You know, it's just a ambush and, no, it's, we're here to work on a, a, a solution for your concerns. And, and, uh, I think there's gonna, would you agree, uh, Jason, that we'll probably have a subsequent meeting? But, uh, I, I think it was a step in the right direction, but, uh, just the little tension in the room once in a while, but we got through it. Uh, South Dakota DOT, I attended a, in Hill City, Rich and Zachary from Custer put together a presentation there again, you know, identifying what months are we going to close three eighty-five down in, uh, two thousand twenty-four from Kellymont Road to Sharon Lake Road. And, uh, what I don't understand is the, you know, the stakeholders, I saw some retail people, some adjacent landowners, but I didn't see our sheriff's department. I didn't see Hill City ambulance. I didn't see the sheriff's department. So I told Rich that I would reach out to Kevin Carley and Kevin's going to sit there. Because when they do that, we're going to have to figure out what fire department's going to respond to Horse Creek in. It isn't, it isn't going to be Hill City. So Kevin come up to me today and he says he's working directly with the Harvard Highway Patrol and, uh, South Dakota DOT. So that we have a game plan in two thousand twenty-four when they totally shut Highway three eighty-five down. Whether it's in the summer, the winter, the fall, it's going to be closed for about ninety days. And I attended yesterday an elevator, not a, not our directors meeting, but a housing, the housing study that was put together. And it wasn't the one for Rapid City. It's supposed to be MSC, Rapid City and surrounding area. And I don't, I think my take on that was, uh, Tom Johnson wasn't really happy with that, uh, study. Uh, Jason Solomon told me, he says, I, I didn't, they didn't tell me nothing I didn't know before. And the, and the part that I got is that they recommended, you know, this, uh, the, the folks that did the study is that the city put these committees together so that they can figure out how they want to go forward, but there's no mention of the county. And I, I said, you know, where does the county fit in, you know? Cause where they identified the growth was not Rapid City, the Box Elder. It was all just downtown Rapid City like block five. And, and I just think they totally missed the point. This study was supposed to be Rapid City and surrounding area. And there was no mention of the county, how the county could participate. But Jason Solomon and Laura Armstrong and Vicki Fisher, you know, they, they all agree that we have to have a better relationship to keep those meetings going so that we know what each other's doing, and especially when you get in that three mile buffer that the Rapid City Planning Department can work in concert with the Pennington County Planning Department. You know, Vicki Fisher's all for that. And, uh, so anyhow, I think that's something we got to look at going forward. If we can do something on a scheduled basis and, uh, a little more structured to it. And I think that is what I have.
Okay, committee reports. Commissioner Lassiter.
Uh, so I had a conflicting meeting at the same time the Healthcare Trust Board happened. Planning Commission went well. One of the ones you already heard was continued. Um, and then outside of that, Community Health Board, that meeting I, I was at. And pretty much, um, nothing of significance to note there. They're just updating their policies and procedures. And there was nothing major going on with the, uh, Community Health, Health Center. So they're just getting things ready for, I believe it's an expansion that they're doing here in the near future, so.
Commissioner LaTroy.
Oh, thank you. Um, I think on, on list I've got, I didn't make the Healthcare Trust Board because I was in Atlanta attending the McCultray Safety Justice Challenge. So I'll give a little bit of a report on that also. But also at the beginning of the week, we had, I had attended the, uh, powwow kickoff, uh, Prairie Edge. And, uh, presented the HR MOA meeting, donated eight thousand to the powwow. One of the things I wanted to bring up is, uh, that group is hosting what they call CP one oh one, which is, it's a, they'll bring you into a room and, and they actually have, this year, they're going to have, uh, the Miss Hissaplin, Sabrina Poirier. She will give you the basics for attending the powwow, what the dances mean. She's a past dancer. Give you some explanation of what, what you're seeing at the powwow if you want to go. And then they'll actually take you into the arena and give, and seat you to make you feel comfortable. The whole idea of this is to, uh, share the culture in our community. Cause so many people think it's just, uh, uh, the powwow is just a native thing, but it's not. It's meant to be for everybody. And so this was something, they've been sponsoring this for about three years. Um, so with that being said, then we have the Native American, you know, the powwow starts this weekend and the parade's Saturday. So that's happening. Um, so also, then on Tuesday, what we did is we made, uh, uh, I presented a plaque, our proclamation that we did back in December. As you guys seen that I framed it all up and we were trying to get ahold of family members. And it was finally, eight months later, uh, we were able to get everybody together at the Great Plains Tribal, uh, Health Court, uh, Healthcare Board. So to be able to present things to Geraldine Lebo and to, uh, Jerry Lebo, uh, the family members. And so we were actually able to finally get it through and a lot of the family members showed up. They bought pizza for everybody. It was a, uh, pretty humbling event. And after talking with the family members, uh, Marcella, you know, they do, uh, one year after the death that they plan on doing what they call drying of the tears ceremony is what they're going to do. And, and so that proclamation was something that was going to help them out. So that was, that was a very good, uh, presentation, I thought. It went very well and appreciated, uh, we had, uh, Gary Drews and Ron Roskneck who attended. And they visited with a lot of the family members and some of the board members too, so. Um, later on in, during last week, uh, I did attend the Safety Justice Challenge. I don't have all the names with me, but it was, um, Laura Retzel, uh, Jesus.
And Liz.
Yeah, Liz, Liz.
Barry.
Barry, Liz, Barry, Tracy, the State's Attorney's Office. Um, I've been just forgetting the judge's name. But we were all in attendance and, uh, Laura Retzel, actually, um, she was in a, one, she was a presenter of one of the work, one of the four at a workshop. And that was the engaging with local officials. And what she was doing was identifying, this is what happens, folks, is, is, uh, all the, uh, stuff that we do in, in our offices is amazing. I mean, uh, she actually prevent, presented a lot of the diversion programs. And one of the biggest ones was the Oyate Court that most of the people in that room were, were surprised about. And that lodged, launched in twenty twenty-one and was a referral source from the adult and the young adult diversion participants. So I'd encourage some of you guys to look into some of this. You know, we've got the adult diversion program, domestic violence diversion program, drug diversion program, as we know, the young adult diversion program. And the Yate Courts and then the State's Attorney's Office served over twenty-six hundred unique individuals in all the diversion programs. But she presented on that and Liz also, and I didn't catch that till afterwards. She had a, she was in a workshop that was, she was presenting on, um, using, uh, excuse me, implementing a data-informed familiar face and strategy lessons. So she was actually giving lessons on the other states and cities. So she was actually giving lessons on the other states and cities on keeping track of records, what she sends us. How to keep track of the data, how to be able to share it and show it to your elected officials and to the stakeholders. And so, you know, that's pretty amazing that we get some outstanding people in our community that are actually participating in these training sessions that are put on. So with that, I'll yield.
So it was my pleasure yesterday to represent the commission at the announcement by the Helmsley Charitable Trust of the total gift that they gave us of $4 million for the Crisis Stabilization Center. And state was represented there by the Director of Social Services. Behavioral Management was there with Amy. Senator Governor was in attendance. And then, of course, Barry was there. And then Walter, and not sure I know how to pronounce Walter's last name, but Walter is actually a grandson of the Helmsleys.
Wow.
And, but he's also the trust officer with it. So, and as he said, South Dakota is very close to his heart. In fact, they have a home in central South Dakota. And so providing us with $4 million for going forward, you know, that includes what they've given us in the bank of sports going forward. So that's pretty neat. And then with the monument, $1 million that they're providing also, a lot of things have come together to make this whole thing possible. So enjoy doing that. And Lloyd, you did a great job on the proclamation for Marcella LeBeau. That was your show out there and you did a great job, not only for that family, but for all of those that were familiar with Marcella and what she had done over the years. And she lived a long life, but she had accomplished a lot during that period of time too. And those proclamations that you did up were beautifully done. So I don't think anybody could have been more prouder of receiving those than the daughters did. So that was great. So appreciate that. Commissioner Ross Kneck.
I'm gonna echo your sentiments on that proclamation. But another thing is that it's building bridges between county government and the tribes. You know, they appreciate us being there. They know that we care. And it was done very excellent. The Penning County Housing redevelopment, we discussed. We had a couple candidates for consultants doing the conversion to RAD, which is an assistance demonstration from Section 8. And both of those didn't pan out. So I was talking with Brian and we've got a couple more consultants that helped us do that conversion that we'll be exploring forward. We talked about the bid opening for the assembly units that the county donated $2 million towards, which will go up by Vicki Powers Park. The bid opening for that project will be in one hour and 50 minutes. And hopefully I can be there. So it's pretty exciting. We figured about 150,000 a unit and that's 10,500,000. So I'll be curious to see how close we get to that benchmark. Once again, I want to thank the county for helping us with that project for the $2 million. I did attend Elevate Director's Meeting. It was just business as normal. At then, I could see Tom was saying, well, you know, sure, it would be nice if the county would participate in their campaign, financing campaign. So he hinted that a couple times during the meeting. So I'm just telling you that I heard that. That's all I got.
Commissioner Adcock.
I think Ron gave my report on Penning County Housing. Maybe Holly, if you wanna tell them about Tom and the economic development and why he's coming for your department head meeting.
Yeah, just that he's gonna come on October 13th at 10:00 AM to meet with the department heads to give a wage presentation on current market conditions and the software that they use.
Thank you, Phil.
Anything else? Okay, do you have your calendars available before we go to executive session? Figure out this special meeting date. And for me, I can tell you right now, I'm not available until the 13th.
It's away, sorry.
13th, Thursday, the 13th afternoon or evening.
I can make the 13th work. Evening.
13th is Thursday.
Yep.
Is that what you're looking at, something in the evening? I'm okay either way.
I'm open to anything.
From looks of the crowd, I think it could be an all-nighter.
Can't do a Thursday.
Well, and just for the board's info, there will be a presentation on the next commission meeting on the 18th from Sarah Frankenstein on elections. So I don't know if you want to do it before or after that date.
I guess I'd kind, personally, I'd kinda like to have that information going into.
Second bet?
I mean, going into, going into a special meeting on elections, I'd like to have the officer at least confirm some stuff, so.
Okay, that, you guys have to the 18th?
As long as it's not the 19th, it's the 20th, because I'm in that road, that road conference.
Would the 26th work for everybody?
Good for me.
I could make the 26th work.
26th, Wednesday?
Evening.
Does that have to be the full evening?
Can we start like at 4:00?
4:00, 3:00.
Yeah, and limit it to 6:30 or something, 4:00 to 6:00, two hours is good. Anybody opposed to that?
You know, if we say it's gonna be two hours and we need to really just focus on what needs to be talked about, because you could go four hours and just be a bunch of repetitive stuff. So I like the idea of two, two and a half hours and say, this is your opportunity. Spend it wisely.
I agree, because I, from my understanding, unless I'm wrong, this is a presentation that they're gonna give to us. So I wouldn't, I kinda like the 4:00 to 6:00 limitation. That way, that gives them time to do their presentation. And then if there's public, there's gonna be public comment.
Well, do you want, want the Secretary of State's office invited to attend?
That'd be a great idea.
Cindy, secretary, anything to do with elections?
Anything to do with it. I would say that we probably need to at least let it go to 1900, 7 o'clock just to, you know, if there's gonna be some conversation, questions and things of that nature, there might be, it might be wise to.
4:00 to 7?
Yeah, but I do think that's wise to have Secretary of State's office.
So would that be the elect or the current?
I think you have to let it be the current.
Well, if you give everybody an hour to speak and then you let the other with public comment and the factual people speak and do the rebuttal or whatever, I think your two hours is well used. Because usually if you give three minutes, how many people is that let speak, Holly? Are we gonna limit it to three minutes?
Well, didn't Barnett put out a paper?
I don't think, I think on a special meeting, I think you're gonna have a difficult time. If you only have the one subject matter, you're gonna have a difficult time limiting it.
Give the one group an hour to speak and the other group an hour or whoever to rebuttal or ask questions in that second hour. I think you go three hours, you're gonna be repetitive.
Highly possible.
I like the two hour.
I like the two hour.
Okay, 26 works for everybody?
Yep. I'll let Cindy know when I get upstairs.
I think we need to make a motion.
I'll let Cindy know.
Okay.
Tell them they have an hour to discuss. 4:00 to 6:00. And then hour for us to ask questions or other people to ask questions with Secretary of State and Cindy, whoever to answer. You guys have to make a motion for that.
Can the board make a motion?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I think once we get solidified.
Okay.
October 26th, have a two-hour meeting from 4:00 to 6:00 to discuss. Holly, help.
So are we gonna just cut it off regardless where we're at in that meeting? I just wanna, I guess maybe that's where I'm kinda questioning.
Well, I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna set a time period, then I think you have to tell proponents or whoever's coming in to testify that wants something else done, you have to put them on a time limit of saying you have an hour to present.
That gives them a plan to work with, yeah.
Yeah.
And responding, responding to whatever they say, they have an hour to be able to respond to.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe we give them like a 30-minute presentation for either side? And the reason why I say that is because what I did notice with the water one, it was good to have the presentation and then open it up for even public questions. And that way, you kind of get it even, because some of the public may not be on the same side. I mean, some of the public may just say, we think this is good, or they may have some questions for the other side. And I just, it might be, instead of giving them one hour each and then now we're kind of locked into that, if you give both sides half an hour each and then we get an hour's worth of discussion timeframe and then maybe 10 minutes at the end to wrap it up from each side. Does that make sense?
I don't know. We know that Monforehead, nine people, including himself, scheduled to present, several of them on Zoom, several of them from out of state that supposedly are experts in their field in particular areas. It's up to the commission, but.
And is there really two sides? I think it's their request for a presentation, but then the board should allow staff, the auditor, time as well, if she feels.
Or public comment, you know, you could have the staff do any other comment in that second hour.
My, from my understanding, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Present, they want to present, so they have all these people to present. I think two hours is plenty enough time. There is no way our staff or anybody else can gather that information that's presented and be able to offer a response in that time. What they're gonna have to do is review all the discussion and then come back to us with what some of their thoughts is my belief and what would need to be done. Because with that many speakers and that much information, I'm not gonna be able to exhore or do it. It's a non-action meeting. They asked for a presentation.
Right, so that gives them an hour to present. If we have, like, what you're saying, what I'm saying, that Cindy doesn't have to say something and the Secretary of State, they can just tell us their process.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? So we're not gonna sit there and go hopefully back and forth, you're wrong, you're right. One gets to present, the other gets to present. And then we take from there as a commission, if I'm correct, what we would like to look at for the future from those two presentations, where we want to go as a commission, if we want to do anything. Does that make sense?
I can tell you, I'm just gonna exorb it in that night. I don't plan on making the decisions, but.
Well, you know, not like a staunch decision, but you know what I mean? You're gonna take those two sides and say, we don't have a decision, but we'd like to think about it and this is where we're going in the future with this. Not with a, I guess, not with a decision of what they said, but decision of that, we're gonna come back after we do investigation and figure it out. Not investigation, whatever you want to call it.
So just before the election, June election, I was at a meet and greet at the Canyon Lake Chomp House or whatever. And so Secretary Barnett was there and I went up to him and I told him I was getting a lot of complaints about the election process. And he generated a two-page letter a few days after that. Remember that, Gary?
Yep.
I don't know where that letter is at, but I wouldn't mind. Somebody can find it. I think we all ought to take a look at that before this next meeting.
That'd be good.
Do you need a motion?
I was saying it, but.
Need a motion? Yeah.
October 26th, right, that Wednesday, we have a two-hour meeting on election information, is that what we're calling it? And anything else I need to add?
Starting at 4:00.
Starting from 4:00 to 6:00.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Thank you.
And a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Need a motion for executive session? Motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, come out of executive session. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, we're done.